Come on up, we have a certificate of recognition for you. The certificate of recognition is awarded Michael Graymont for his outstanding volunteer services and his success in bringing prestigious swim events or swim meets for both youth and adults to the Morgan Hill Dennis Kennedy Aquatic Center, which has enhanced our community's aquatics legacy. So, Michael, thank you for that. This is a certificate of recognition for you. You got it. Thank you. Very good. Our next proclamation and who is accepting that tonight is Chris Keone. This is proclaiming the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023 as Public Works Week. The Public Works Department keeps our community fully functioning through a broad range of services such as infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Morgan Hill. It is the public interest, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders and children in the city of Morgan Hill to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And you can just call Chris anytime this week and he will give you tours of all of the different, I'm joking about that, I want to make sure I'm giving you the right proclamation. There you go, Chris. Thank you so much. This next one is proclaiming the month of May as Affordable Housing Month. I can already tell I'm up to fish through these here to find the right one. During the entire month of May, our region's housing partners, and this is by the way Danielle Delatori and from House Keys and Jesus Bakara from EAH, are they here? Please come on up. I'll read this proclamation first. During the entire month of May, our region's housing partners host dozens of virtual workshops and webinars to inform the region and the community about the region's housing challenges and solutions. Each year, thousands of Silicon Valley families struggle to find an affordable home in one of the most expensive housing markets in the nation. Many organizations throughout Santa Clara County are dedicated to providing safe, stable, permanent and affordable housing to all members of the community and are collaboratively working to bring the need for affordable housing to the forefront of discussion in Silicon Valley. The city of Morgan Hill is committed to safe, stable and affordable housing for its residents. The strength of Morgan Hill's community and economy depends on providing access to housing options that allow current and future residents of all income levels to live where they work. Let me find the right one here, sorry. There it is. There we go. Here it is. Thank you so very much. Oh, is there two of them? Is there two proclamations for them? One for each? Oh. Here it is. There you go. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. This next one is proclaiming the month of May as Water Safety Month, and this is Molly Petro. Who's going to be receiving it. Molly, thank you. Come on up. As you're coming up, I'll make sure I have the right, right one here. There it is. Okay. How are you? Good. Thank you. The citizens of Morgan Hill understand the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. The city acknowledges and contributes and acknowledges the contributions of other community organizations that provide aquatic services for Morgan Hill residents. Thousands of individuals have learned the life skill of swimming at the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center and Centennial Recreation Center. The Aquatic Center will open for its summer swim season on Saturday, June 10th, 2023. And here you go. Want to open that and check it out. Thank you so much. This next one is proclaiming the month of May of for National Older Americans Month. And this is Anna Bylecki. Is she here? I must admit, Anna, I was expecting someone much older than you. The older adults, the older adults in Morgan Hill play an important role in by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge and wisdom. Recognizing the success of older adults in our community encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments. Our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by, one, promoting and engaging in activity wellness and social inclusion; two, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living; and three, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experiences of older adults. And here you go. Just make sure it's the right one. There you go. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And as you're proclaiming the month of May as Wildfire Awareness Month, and Chief Robert Wong will be here to receive this recognition. Wildfires are a natural periodic occurrence in California and many native species depend on cyclical fires for survival. Unfortunately, this natural process often conflicts with human land use and careless or malicious human activity causes many fires that would not have occurred naturally. In order to continue to enjoy the economic and recreational benefits of our wilderness lands, we must strive to achieve a balance between California's fiery ecology and the need to protect human life and property. Firefighting alone cannot protect us, and every citizen, especially those living in fire-prone areas, have an important role in preventing loss of life and property from wildfire events. This month, we should all do our part to raise public awareness of the fire season that is already upon us and take steps to protect lives, homes and families in the event of a wildfire. And remember, only you can prevent forest fires. And finally, this is proclaiming May 15th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023 as National Week, as National Police Week. And we have Chief Palsgrove to receive this as well. Across our nation, law enforcement officers carry the great responsibility protecting their fellow citizens. On Peace Officers Memorial Day and during National Police Week, we honor these public servants who fight crime, violence and terrorism, and we pay homage to the heroes who have fallen in the line of duty. As we observe Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week, we pause, pay tribute to those who serve in law enforcement. On this occasion, we occasionally remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice and we pray for the families and friends they have left behind. We thank all the extraordinary men and women here in Morgan Hill and across the nation who have answered the call to serve in law enforcement for their commitment to justice and to their communities. Chief, thank you. Now, we are going to do, it is the Youth Action Council presentation first, and then we're going to do the graduation following that.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, city managers, city attorney and our community members.
Is your, is your microphone on?
I don't know.
There it is.
Within the Youth Action Council, this will actually be our last presentation for our fiscal year. And we're really excited to be able to share this asset with all of you and to delve into our own personal stories with that. But before we begin, we do want to introduce ourselves. My name is Ria Deschondé and I'm a senior at GECA. This is also my fourth year in Yak and my second year as Yak president.
My name is Ish Kandra. This is my first year in Yak as a Yak active member and I'm a freshman at GECA.
My name is Aria Vade. This is my first year in Yak. I'm an active member and I'm also a freshman at Oakwood School.
On May, our developmental asset this month is number 18, youth programs. One person spends three more hours per week in sports, clubs or organizations at school and/or in community organizations. I think Yak, giving back to our community and being actively involved is inherent within our mission. And so being able to stand in front of all of you today and share our stories within that is really meaningful. So as we delve into those personal stories, thank you all for your time.
This month's complimentary asset is asset number seven, community values youth. So, young person perceives that adults in the community value youth. To me, this means that my community is enriching me as an individual by feeling my extracurriculars.
Okay, so I don't know about you, but me personally, I do not enjoy doing activities I'm not good at because I easily get frustrated. But until I was introduced to basketball, things actually started to change for me. So, not everyone is a prodigy. Everything takes time and practice. Basketball has taught me time management. As a freshman, being a part of a varsity team, it was, it's much more different than being a part of a normal team because I usually got home pretty late and I had tons of homework and I had to prepare for tests, which were literally due the next day, which was really pretty hard. But when I started to acknowledge, acknowledge that pattern, I finally learned how to manage my time. Basketball has also built confidence for me because during our preseason, it was really hard. We were against, against, we were against these hard teams with skilled players on the team. And but our last preseason game was actually a huge nail biter. But we were down 17 to 18 and trust me, I did not want to lose this game by one point. So there was six seconds left on the clock. My friend Kaylee, she passes me the ball. I grabbed the ball. I started to panic. So I just shot it and it actually went in. I know. Tell me about it. I'm really shocked myself. But aside from that, I've, basketball has built my confidence because before I used to never really shoot the ball. I would pass it to my teammate and hope that they did all the scoring. But if it hadn't been my school offering me to join the basketball team, then I would never realize the benefit of trying new things.
I've seen Aria within a very professional setting within Yak, not within basketball this past year. But I can personally attest to the value that she places on teamwork and I'm really grateful for that. I joined Yak in the fall of my freshman year and now as I stand before all of you, I'm three weeks away from graduating high school. And this year has been an uncertain one. Not only just this year, these past few years with COVID and everything that's happened in between. See, I didn't know what I would be studying, where I'd be going to college, if I was even going to be within California. This year especially has led to a lot of self-reflection and realized that the one concept that I've had these past few years is Yak. When I first joined in the middle of both of these pictures, I was a really timid girl. I was not one to raise my hand and I definitely would not voluntarily be standing in front of all of you today. It was intimidating, but I was able to push past it because of everything that I learned in Yak. I remember that feeling of not knowing whether the things that I was going to say or the ideas that I had would be enough. And so, I never spoke up. Part of a community, of being part of an organization that gave me that voice where month after month, city council members and our community members are coming back to listen to what we have to say. With so much confidence and gave me that level of self-esteem that I know I'm going to be carrying forward no matter where I go or what I do. That level of fulfillment has meant so much to me. So for this month in particular, I'm really glad that we have this opportunity to present on our community and how we're able to give back because I don't know where I'd be without it. So, thank you.
You've inspired me greatly in these past four years, Ria, to be the best leader that I possibly can. Similarly, I've been able to grow immensely in this past year because of clubs. It was actually my sister who had inspired me to join clubs when she was graduating. When I saw her up on that podium, I was filled with awe in hearing and seeing all of what she had achieved throughout her high school experience. I knew it was all due to extracurriculars and she introduced me to many of them, one of which was YWL, or the Young Women Leaders. YWL is a group of girls in my local area who focus on building their leadership and social skills whilst planning and hosting community events. One of these events was our annual youth leadership conference. And in planning this conference, I was truly able to work closely with my team in achieving a common goal. Similarly, with another one of my groups, Serge, or showing up for racial justice, I've been mentored to speak my mind and be creative with my ideas and thinking. And finally, with Yak, I've been able to give these lovely monthly city council presentations that have made me be able to grow my public speaking skills as well as my confidence with the council. I am thankful for both this opportunity as well as my sister for influencing me to join these clubs. I now believe that I'll be able to leave a similar legacy to her and I'm so thankful to do such.
Thank you, Ish, for sharing your story about your sister's legacy and how that has impacted you. So to end off our slideshow, we chose a quote that best relates to our developmental asset, which is, "You may never know what results come of your actions, but if you do nothing, there will be no results." Alba Hafma Gandhi. So to us, this quote means that if you never step out of your comfort zone and explore your interests in the community, then you'll never know what you're capable of. Thank you for this opportunity and hearing our, and this wonderful experience of sharing our personal stories. To end it off, our Yak president, Ria, has some few words to say.
I have a lot of thank yous to go around tonight, just FYI. It's not just for this year. I mean, for me, me and many, many of my fellow teammates have been in Yak for years throughout our entire high school experience. And having this opportunity to come back to present in front of all of you time and time again and to reflect upon what these assets really mean to us too, has been invaluable. I said before too, that there has been a lot of change recently and having this place to come back to where we know that our ideas are heard, has been invaluable. And nothing in Yak that we do is done alone. And so, we have a lot of our fellow seniors here tonight. I would like to invite them all up to, as a final hurrah, for our contributions to Yak and for everything that the city has also given to us. So, would you like to come on up, please? We do have quite a few of us here up tonight. Thank you all again for also having us here. We believe, oh, Cheeky will be coming up for the next bit.
Are we doing the graduation right now?
I think so.
And we want to say just real quickly on behalf of the council, how much we appreciate each of you showing up these, over these, these past few months on your presentations. Each of you have displayed incredible leadership qualities and we appreciate you and your investment in our community and in this program. So a honor to come down and hand you these, these certificates. Thank you. Yes. Very good. Ria? Well, thank you so much for your involvement. We appreciate all that you've given to this program. Thank you. Lashnabi? Thank you for your commitment to the program as well, for all that you've given back to the community. Thank you. Agnes? Thank you for your dedication and commitment to this program as well. Adavan? Thank you for your commitment and dedication to the program as well. Thank you so much. Ash? Thank you for your commitment and dedication to this program too. Thank you. Ash? It's good to see you again. Thank you for your commitment and dedication as well. Thank you. Congratulations. Allison? There you go. Thank you for your commitment and dedication. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Logan. Appreciate it. Congratulations to all of you.
I wanted to say congratulations, leaders, and I would like to take a picture, group picture really quick with taking this opportunity that we have Mayor Turner with us, a really quick question, question, picture. And getting there quick, we're going to just busy night and you guys did great and we're really proud of you. You have a long, a great future ahead of you.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next presentation will be by PG&E. But go right ahead. Yep.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Ramos and I'm the PG&E Senior Local Government Affairs Representative for this area. And I want to first thank the mayor and council members for giving us this opportunity to present and city manager Christina Turner for the invitation. We really appreciate that and and her guys' continued partnership. Before we get started, I also want to thank you guys for your ongoing engagement and feedback throughout the, the past, you know, several years. We're committed to providing your city and its residents with safe and reliable electric service. We are going to go through our presentation this evening and please feel free to share any questions, concerns or comments at the end of our discussion. And right now, I'm going to make sure I turn it over to our regional vice president, Teresa Alvarado.
Thank you, Christina. Is that the correct first slide? Yes, okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council and staff. My name is Teresa Alvarado and I am the vice president in the South Bay and Central Coast for PG&E. And I want to echo what Christina said and thank you for your partnership and having us here. Morgan Hill is very special to us at PG&E and to myself in particular. It's why I chose to locate my office here over on Cochran Circle. And we also have many PG&E coworkers who call Morgan Hill home, including our head of electric operations. So he, along with many of your constituents, experienced multiple outages during the early September of 2022 heat storm. I also know that the impact of losing power has on our customers. It's not only inconvenient, but it impacts our ability to work and our productivity, and it can be dangerous. But what we experienced last September was historic. The record-high temperatures and system-wide increase in energy use damaged our equipment, leading to outages. We're going to talk some more about these outages and what we're doing to minimize the impact of future outages on the residents of Morgan Hill. We also know that accurate and timely information about outages is critical to city staff, to you, mayor and council, and to the residents of Morgan Hill. And we're committed to improving in that regard as well. We have since last September had numerous meetings with city staff and will work closely with them on a continuing basis. In fact, through our increased coordination, we've responded to two high priority projects that the city had. One was the new sewer trunk along Renz Avenue and then as well as an undergrounding work that we needed to do for the Valley Water Project along Huron Main. And those have been resolved and moved forward thanks to good coordination with city staff. So with that, I want to introduce our team. Again, you met Christina Ramos. We put together a really excellent team today and we hope you find value in our presentation. To my left is Ivan Baez. He's our supervisor of electric distribution and planning. We have Matthew Schneiderman. I think, here he is. He's our regional senior manager. And joining us remotely is Patrick Ellis. He's our supervisor of emergency management and public safety. Pat is unable to be here tonight in person because he's responding to the flooding issues in Tulare County for us. Next slide. So as I dive in, I want to first discuss our community wildfire safety program, acknowledging that wildfire safety week is this week and the tools that we use to mitigate fire risk. So the first step that we take is to identify what, where wildfire risk is greatest. And we worked closely with CAL FIRE in that regard. So we have a high fire risk area map. And as you can see, the city of Morgan Hill has high fire risk areas within its city boundaries, but the vast majority of high fire risk areas visible on the map are located on the fringe of the city to the east and the west and slightly to the south. This is important to note because even though the majority of the city is not within a high fire risk area, many of the power lines which provide your community with electricity do traverse these high fire risk areas. So later in the presentation, we're going to look at the specific circuits that serve the community. And it's important to orient ourselves around where high fire risk exists. Next slide. So through our community wildfire safety program, we're building the state-of-the-art electric system our customers deserve. As a reminder, we target our wildfire mitigation efforts in the highest risk areas. And our approach includes multiple layers of protection. For example, we are undergrounding 10,000 miles of power lines. We're installing stronger poles and covered power lines. We're keeping trees a safe distance from power lines. And we also have tools to keep power lines from causing outages, including enhanced power line safety settings, or EPSS, as well as public safety power shut-offs. So all these efforts combined have significantly reduced wildfire risk, but we know we have a lot more to do. So the next slide is going to be covered by Ivan Baez to talk more about the outages we saw last September. And press that button.
Thank you, Teresa. Hi, everyone. My name is Ivan Baez and I'm the supervisor for electric distribution plan.
Is that, is that microphone on?
It's just pulled.
Okay, is that better? I will be talking about some of the items that Teresa mentioned, enhanced power safety settings. In 2021, we began implementing new, more sensitive safety settings to address the extreme drought, drought conditions and increase wildfire risk we were seeing throughout our service area. These advances, these amount safety settings automatically turn off power when one, in one tenth of a second, if a hazard such as a tree strikes the power line like the picture shown on here. Quickly and automatically shut enough power when the hazard is detected. It can help stop wildfires before they have a chance to start. These safety settings are a proven wildfire prevention tool. Last year, there was 60% reduction in emissions on EPSS-capable power lines in high fire threat districts. Preventing emissions with EPSS, we help stop potential wildfires before they start. You can see the safety settings in action on, on this slide. Next slide, please. Here we see a visual example of how enhanced power safety line settings protect power lines. If power is turned off due to hazard, we must then check the line for damage prior to restoring power. Patrols are done either on the ground or in the air during daylight hours. Next slide, please. As shown, as shown on this slide, our ability to modify customers in advance depends on the type of outage. While we're speaking, there are two different types of outages shown in this slide. Those that we can provide advance notification for and those that we are unable to provide advance notification. Public safety power shut-offs, rotating outages and planned maintenance, you can expect to know in advance and receive regular updates. For emergency repairs, active wildfires, system damage and outages on EPSS-enabled power lines, you can expect updates during and after an outage. Recent outages that occur in Morgan Hill were due to system damage and outages on EPSS-enabled lines. That is why you did not receive advanced notification in any of those instances. I mean, outages were, we conducted detailed outage reviews to identify costs and opportunities to further improve reliability. Here you can see an overview of the causes of the outages customers in the city of Morgan Hill may have experienced in September. One important note is that when an outage cost is undetermined, it does not mean there was, wasn't a safety risk to the power lines. In many instances, vegetation like tree branches fall onto the power line, causing it to de-energize to prevent wildfire. That tree branch then falls to the ground, most likely among a lot of other branches and vegetation. When a patrol team arrives, they may no longer be able to identify the fallen vegetation and therefore cannot identify, say, what impacted the power lines. Review process conducted by our team helps us determine what steps can be taken to help minimize the impact of outages and improve customer service. Moving the outages related to the September heat event, we move quickly to make improvements for our customers. On the map here, you can see where our protective devices are installed within the city limits and where we took corrective action following outages. Corrective actions include replacing equipment, vegetation removal and adjusting safety settings and overhead conductors. As you can see, there are protective settings and correct matches taken outside of the city limits. However, these same circuits serve customers within Morgan Hill and play a part in the reliability of our service.
So if you could stay on this one for just a moment, you can see with the colors, I know it's a very dense map, but the different colors indicate the different circuits. So the green in the northeast corner is Morgan Hill 2104 Circuit. On the west side, you see the yellow one, Morgan Hill 2111, just for orientation. Thank you. Let's go to the next slide, please. Next Ivan. So at the start of this year, our region and the rest of California, you know, experienced also a series of major storms. And I know that you were responding to that just as much as we were, your city staff. And it caused over 2.8 million customers to lose power. So storms caused extensive damage to our system. In addition, localized flooding, landslide slides, road closures and other hazards made it a challenge to safely access and repair damaged equipment. So we understood the challenge, which is why PG&E mobilized the largest storm response team in our company's history. We literally had mutual aid crews come from seven states as well as Canada. It was a huge effort and we worked 24/7 to repair damaged equipment. And because of the nature of the storms, as soon as we restored everyone, there was another storm. And we had a lot of outages again and we worked quickly to to restore them, but it was very up and down for obviously for months. In the photos, you can see our team briefing local officials from our base camp in Santa Cruz. Of course, the Santa Cruz mountains were hit incredibly hard and in that area, it was very hard to even access where the damage was because of so many road closures. And the team also participated in Congressman Panetta's town hall in Felton. And then there was a follow-up one in Boulder Creek as well. So as we prepared for winter storms, we made sure we pre-staged crews throughout the service area. At the peak of our response, we deployed more than 7,200 dedicated personnel across the service area. In the South Bay and Central Coast region, we had more than 1,500 coworkers and contractors managing restoration efforts. That is a picture of our base camp in SoCal and that you see all the trucks there lined up, ready to respond every day. Next slide. So you know, it can be frustrating, as I said, to not only be out of power, but also not know when it is coming back. And on this slide, you can see the notifications that our customers receive when an unplanned outage occurs. While these notifications are just estimates, they are based on the best information that we have as well as historic knowledge of our crews for how to respond and where the outage is taking place. We always do our best to share what we know as soon as we know it, keeping in mind that weather can change frequently. Customers can also view real-time outage information at PG&E's online outage center on our website and search by their specific address by city or by county. And the site includes support in 16 languages and that website is PG&E.comoutages. We also encourage our customers to make sure that their contact information is up to date in their account settings so that they can receive the latest notifications directly via text or by email regarding outages and expected restoration. So next slide, and I'm going to turn it over to Pat Ellis, who will provide information about public safety partnerships. Pat, can you hear us? I think you're on mute. Nope, hold on one second, Pat. There you go. Try, say something now.
Is this his, is this his the last portion of this presentation?
Um, and then we come back again. He's not.
Okay, why don't, why don't you work on getting him on and then you continue on with the presentation?
Okay. Do you know what what's going on though? No.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. So as Teresa mentioned at the beginning, my name is Matt Schneiderman. I'm a Regional Senior Manager for the South Bay, which obviously covers your area. And to some degree, you've heard, you know, how we communicate with customers during storms and storm response. What I'd like to talk a little bit about tonight is some of the other types of communication that we have with customers on an ongoing basis throughout the year. Making sure that everybody has the latest information available. Some of the things you may see from us, monthly bill inserts, and if you're like me, you may mistakenly throw those out. But there are a lot of good tips included in there, safe digging tips, things about climate credits, different senate bills and and things like that. So always good to take a look at that. You may get emails from us, which also have energy savings tips or may have something related specifically to your bill, how you compare to other customers in the area and things like that. We also do clearly webinars, which some of you may have joined. And those are a really great way to get some of the most real time latest updates from us on everything from wildfire to customer communication and pretty much around the gamut of all the topics. And then, of course, we we send information via mailers as well, covering many of the same topics that I just mentioned. The last thing I'll say is we perform a lot of targeted outreach to customers who may use power for medical devices. And as you can imagine during storms, this is a key customer segment, call it a medical baseline customers. It's very important to us to be able to reach out to them and make sure that they're okay and they have the resources they need, especially when they're out of power. We're always open to feedback for additional ways that we communicate better with all of you. We do a lot of survey research and so if you ever get any of those surveys, I highly encourage you to fill them out. We do review them on a regular basis and it's really important for us to hear what our customers are thinking and to get your perspectives on that stuff as well. Let's go to the next slide and I'm going to turn it back to Christina if Pat is still unavailable.
Thank you, Matt. We can try one more time for Pat and if not, I will try to relay where he was going to talk to. That's all right. Pat, are you on?
I think we should just move on.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on, but we we will cover the slides regarding our emergency management notifications.
Yeah, sorry about that. So Pat is a supervisor on our public safety specialist team. And it's also emergency management. Tonight, we're going to talk about some of the information and the updates that we provide to stakeholders on the public safety front. And you may have seen them out in the community during the storms. So, you know, during storms and weather events, fires and other emergencies, our public safety specialists act as a point of contact for multiple agencies, oftentimes sitting in EOCs, right, that different cities and counties have and relaying information. We provide briefings on a daily or twice daily basis. There are different jurisdictions and authorities in the county are invited to join and receive updates. They also work directly with the Morgan Hill Fire Chief and the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Matt. And just for final thought, we also internally have what we call our four deep deployment where our divisions work together and collaboratively to maintain communication within our internal teams as well that we're relaying back out to you guys as our customer. But finally, to close out, these are our resources that are available to our customers. It includes our wildfire safety page, our partnership with 2-on-1, reported app and our safety action center. All of these things can be located on on the sites that you see there. I'm looking up when I should be looking in front of me, I apologize. And then customers can reach out to our dedicated wildfire safety contacts at 866-743-6589 or you can also email wildfire safety at PG&E.com if they have any other questions. Again, I want to thank you all for letting us present tonight and we're here if you have any questions of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have questions and I'm going to start. I'd like to thank all of you for being here and certainly appreciate your time and and the update. We think that's certainly important information that you provided this evening and we appreciate you, again, taking the time to do that. But for the most part, we were most interested in getting more information on what occurred back in September of 2022. Morgan Hill was disproportionately affected by those outages while other parts of the region were impacted. We seem to get the brunt of it. And I've had four questions I've been wanting to ask you and would hope to get answers from you this evening. I've also got some other questions with regards to communications that you've had with staff over the last seven months as well. So let me start with my four questions and hope to get some response from you on that. What caused the problem? Number two, how will the problem be fixed? Number three, when will the problem be fixed? Number four, what assurances can you provide us that this problem will not happen again? Our, our, again, as I said, we were disproportionately affected. Our residents were outraged over what was occurring and they had reason to be upset and they were ticked off. And the council, I wasn't on the council at the time. We were hearing loud and clear from the residents and those who were on the council at that time, we hear loud and clear. They're expecting us to get answers from PG&E and we would hope that you would be able to provide those to us this evening. So I will turn it over to you to answer those four questions and then I have some additional questions following that.
I don't know if we have any, we provided specific information to staff about the outages in September 22. I don't have that information. Do you have it? Is it in the appendix? It's awesome. I think what was important to recognize is the high fire risk areas surrounding Morgan Hill, not that one, surrounding Morgan Hill are really the the issue with regard to that period of time. We had the EPSS settings. It was a confluence of events. Morgan Hill was not disproportionately affected given your proximity to high fire risk areas. We had circuits that traverse high fire risk areas and so the EPSS settings were enabled, which means they turn off power very quickly if anything touches them. At the same time, there was a tremendous amount of use on the system itself and in Morgan Hill. And so those two events together resulted in the inability of our equipment to cool off. They weren't necessarily overloaded equipment that would have been expected to fail. But the high temperatures, the fact that they didn't, weren't able to cool off at night because we had multiple days of very high heat and then the extreme usage, along with the circuits being fed through high fire risk areas, it was just a very bad confluence of events.
I will say though, again, our engineering team. Gilroy also experienced pretty high heat. They're also in a high fire area. They did not experience the sort of outages that we did. San Jose has much more usage than we do. Certainly their wires were a little warm as well, probably couldn't cool off like ours. And so it is again, though, we're going to get to what what would, what would be the fix here? We cannot go through that again this next year. We do get, while this was historic heat, we get times throughout the year, especially in the summertime where we do experience higher heat. And so this will be unacceptable, especially again, as we are all moving toward this 2030 date that so many people are talking about just going full electric. Frankly, we don't think PG&E is capable to handle that. And so we can't even get through a historic heat event and our our residents are affected. So again, I would say disproportionately, you might interpret that differently, which is fine.
Is there anything you want to add, Ivan?
Yes, what I wanted to add is that the studies that were installed on those protective devices, EPSS settings that were enabled to operate in a tenth of a second, we went back, reviewed the settings and increased the sensibility so they're not going to be as sensible as they were before and they're not going to operate due to added load on the system.
So when you, this this EPSS setting, something comes near or touches a wire, immediately shuts it down for days?
No, no, but we did have to patrol the circuit to make sure that there was nothing on the line. But if we re-energized it, then it would potentially spark a wildfire. However, we have done quite a bit to install protective devices along our circuit so that we can minimize the length of circuit that's impacted and so that not everyone else on that circuit. At the beginning, when we instituted this in 2019, what was the entire circuit would go out and we have to manually patrol each of those circuits to make sure that there's no fire danger before we re-energize it. For the last couple of years, we have reduced the wildfire impact in terms of acres burned by 90%. It's remarkable. It's it's truly is saving our communities. However, it has come at a huge cost to reliability. And so we have added more and more devices, sectionalizing devices, which you can describe it probably better than I can how they work. But it's minimizing the the location of the outage and the fault so that we can keep as many customers online as possible while still addressing the wildfire risk. Do you want to, did I say anything incorrect?
No, that was all correct. The other thing that we could add is that because it's reducing number of customers impacted, we're able to patrol the the circuit faster because we have to patrol the smaller section instead of the whole, the whole circuit.
And I have a question for you because you, I think you said a moment ago that we've adjusted the settings for this for this year so that they are not as sensitive. Did you, did you say that?
Yes.
Okay, so how does that impact wildfire safety?
What we did is we actually just, the the whole circuit is still programmed to operate in a tenth of a second. That's the maximum. So what we did is we allowed more time between one device and the next device so that first device has enough time to operate in clear default.
So the intention of that is to make sure that we are addressing wildfire risk but enabling the rest of the circuit to stay energized.
Yes, using that on a customer's impacted, that is still providing higher risk protection.
Were you able to determine at any point along those lines if something did come in contact with those wires?
Yeah, in many cases, in fact, we had a detailed list. I'm sorry we didn't bring it here today. That's what I was.
Well, this slide kind of shows, yes, this kind, this slide does show what happened and and what those risks are. But I just want to know, you you did ask how the problem was being fixed and what we did find is that it's, during the heat event, 120 overhead and underground transformers were replaced in this region. And this was 22% of the total replacement system wide following that heat event. So that's where the fix is. It's also worth noting that of the 2022 event failures in the region occurred on the transformers that were not listed as overlaid, which showed that this was, yeah, that one, yeah. My apologies if I misinterpreted that line, but but this just shows us how significant this this event was and was in our communities. And it includes like the governor's office weighing in as well and saying how much usage was happening during that heat event, which, you know, we all had to take alert and alarm on that, how overloaded our system was during this heat event. So not just in Morgan Hill, but throughout, you know, California in general.
61%, it says, was equipment failure. And you just, I heard you mention 22% has been.
2% of the system, but 61% was equipment failure due to the overheating of the system, right, because of the usage being so high.
And has that been addressed or would that also be a problem again in the future if that, if if greater usage was in place?
Do you want to respond to that?
Now, look at other places around the country in Arizona, Phoenix, and that's sort of, you know, those are extremely hot locations. And I don't know that they're having the similar problem that we have when we do experience a heat event.
Yeah, so all the equipment that failed during the heatstorm was replaced with the larger equipment, so they will not fail again.
We're going to hold you to that. Let me, if I could, then at least go to the information that our staff has asked for. I'm going to go through a couple of questions here. Initially, our city manager Christina Turner, I think, was in confirm or in in communication with the why for the daily outages, which I think we're getting to here. The big picture public comment, commitment in writing that we can share with our community, have we received that information? Has that been something?
We did a joint op ed, I believe, following the heat storm.
Yeah, yeah. So they, they did an op ed and then just a commitment to continue to present at council meetings and provide information.
Okay, and we would, we would look to ongoing opportunities to have you here. We would certainly appreciate that. With detailed records of the failures of this, of the past week, meaning at that time, this was email again once in September. Preventative maintenance work on the failure areas for the last three years and formal capital improvement plan for improvements. I don't believe we've seen that information yet.
No.
Next one being.
I'm sorry?
Next one being, I'll go through these last three because I think these are probably the three we're going to need to focus on and try to get some, something from you this evening as to when we will, we're going to see this information. One being the formation of a technical working group to work directly with Morgan Hill on the capital repairs. And then commitment to staff future city Morgan Hill Emergency Operations Center activations and provide real-time data for our response and communications. So we would look for, and I, again, it's been seven months. And so especially around the detailed records, the requests that we asked for there. Can we get a, can we get something from you tonight as to when we will get that information?
That information, meaning a capital improvement plan? And we've talked about the technical advisory group. We're ready to support any technical inquiry. I think we were talking about a, a private committee working on those issues. But I don't know if you want to speak anymore about kind of the investments in the system and how we're managing for this year?
I, I don't know if it's that as much as what we're looking for, detailed records of the failures of the past week, preventative maintenance work on the failure areas for the last three years and formal capital improvement plan for improvements.
The work had gotten started under Darren Klein and I think more changes and so nothing had happened.
We, we would be looking for something and maybe again, if you, if, if you get back to us this week or early next week as to a date as to when we could see that information, I think that would be helpful.
And, and city manager Turner and I have been in communication and I am working on that. But you know, to give you a definite timeline right now, I, I can't do that because we are still unraveling from our winter storms. And so I, I, I need to work with a larger team, PG and E team than what you see here in order to coordinate that information.
Would you be able to next week, get us a date as to when we can receive this information? I don't want to wait seven more months.
So we are actively, in fact, so Matt here is my regional senior manager for this area. And one of the things that we're doing this month is digging into summer reliability preparedness for this year. Happy to come back with a, a commitment and a plan for this year. What has changed and just really focus on the improvements that we have already made and what we're planning to make this year. How we will make sure that we will be prepared for any heat event that does come our way.
That would be great. Yeah, so I appreciate that.
To do that.
That I think, maybe next week or set some point here the next few days, you guys can be in communication about that. And I'll open it to any council member Levers.
Good evening.
Hi.
My own?
Yes.
Good evening. Now, no. Thank you for coming tonight. A lot of valuable information. I want to talk about two different things. Last fall, when we had this heat event and people were without, I was not on the council at the time, but there was a lot of communication amongst the community about lost refrigerator items and things like that. Did PG and E address that and compensate people in any way? And do they plan to, if we ever have this happen again, compensate folks?
Do you want to talk about the claims process?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so we do compensate customers for spoilage, right? Each case is looked at on an individual basis. So unfortunately, they would need to call in to submit that type of claim. And there are, you know, for extended outages, there are, the name is eluding me right now, but the name of the program, where if you're out for an extended period of time, there's some monetary compensation as well. We experienced that during the most recent storms, right? Because there were some people who were out for quite an extended period of time. But we do have the claims process and I, you know, I've seen those claims paid.
Okay, so the, I think it's important to just be very clear. If it's PG and E caused outage, then of course, and we're happy to support and help you get to the claims process.
Okay, so the, the customer would need to reach out individually to you, to a certain department or?
I think they, they would call the contact center.
Contact center, okay.
Which is one eight hundred P G E five thousand.
Okay, and there is hope that they might be compensated for lost spoiled food freezers and things like that. Okay, thank you. That's the one thing. And then I want to talk about, we talked a lot about last fall, but just recently, I think it was February, right here by our library, which is right here behind us. That neighborhood was without power for over three days. I know people that actually went to hotels because it was so cold, they couldn't heat their homes. And so what was the story on that? There wasn't, I don't think it was storm related. It was, you know, what happened? We're, we're not in a heating, we're not overheating our, you know, so what happened for three days where they had to go to a hotel? I don't have the, do you know the date for that? I would imagine that it is storm related.
Yeah, so council member Levers, you know, I, I did email the council during the storm and during different outages and that if you had any questions, you can email me. And so I'm happy to give you my card after this and then we can talk about what addresses were affected and we can look into that further.
Yeah, because I did hear from different people that live in this immediate community right here. And, you know, I didn't have answers for them. I referred them to you. But I personally wanted to know what the story was, why it took so long for them to get their power back.
And I'm here as a liaison to you. So if you're hearing from your constituency, you can feel free to reach out to me and I can respond to you accordingly.
Excellent. We can make sure in our communication with staff next week that we provide you with detailed information about that outage. You said which days, early February?
Exactly. It was in the winter. I know that because it was so cold, they had to go to hotels.
Give us the neighborhood, maybe we could.
Clermont Drive.
Okay, well, we can do that. We can take a look and see what the reliability has been in that area for the last, like the first three months of the year or something.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's it.
Sure.
Uh, council member Spring and then council member Borjoli.
Yeah, thank you all for being here again. See, I was on the council and I remember you got an earful from me back then too. And I'm still frustrated, to be honest. I, I think PG and E is, is still not proactive. I still, it's still running. Again, we heard it tonight. You're not catching up. You're saying, well, I don't have the people here because I'm catching up with the latest storm. Whereas the next heat wave is coming, right? It's May. It's raining today, but that's unusual, right? So we need to be prepared. And, and I just don't buy it that, that it's the, the cooling issue. I think our equipment is simply outdated and, and it needs to be replaced, right? You have not provided us with an oversight how old that equipment is and when it was last updated. You're just giving us the fixes, the, the small fixes, which I appreciate it and important. But it hasn't really raised my confidence yet that you can, really can manage it moving forward well enough. I also looked at the forms that, that you claim, you know, that one can submit. Those forms require that you document and have receipts for, for everything you have in your fridge. I mean, who does that, right? Who keeps a grocery receipts for months and months for stuff they put in the fridge or in the freezer, right? Like, this is not a common sense approach, right? And it pretty much makes it impossible then to get reimbursed. So I think you need to rethink the process when you have outages like that and to, and just use common approach and not say, well, I need a receipt for everything you bought six months ago or so. It's just, I don't keep those receipts. No one does. I don't, do you?
Well, I'm just thinking if I, if I purchased some items that were in the freezer, you know, my Costco receipt or, you know, I, I can't say that people will have a receipt for everything.
But that's what you're asking for.
At the same time. But at the same time, how can we, you know, justify providing reimbursement on items for customers that, that maybe were not related to the outage? It's a very difficult process and it is overseen and dictated by the California Public Utilities Commission in terms of the claims process. But we'll make sure that when we get back to you next week, we will also include very specific information about the claims process, what is covered, where it is regulated in terms of, you know, what we can reimburse and how the process continues. But I do want to adjust your first comment in terms of feeling confident in our system. I'd really love, Ivan, if you can speak to that because I, I think that is the crux of this conversation is confidence that PG and E can manage our system.
Yeah, so, so like I said earlier, most of the outages that happened were due to the settings that we had on the equipment, the sensitive settings. And we've adjusted those settings so they would not operate.
Question for you. So were those settings not as sensitive or, or as sensitive in other communities? Were they more sensitive here?
No, they were, they're, they were very similar settings all over the system. What happened here is that Morgan Hill is very susceptible to heat, right? So normally you, the load of Morgan Hill is, is very low, but as soon as the heat starts to come up, it, the load goes way up, it triples what normally, you normally see. And that's what happened. So it was a combination of the cities that we had and the unusual summer that we had last summer.
So the usage pattern, we should also look into that and provide information back to the council. Is the usage pattern different in Morgan Hill than it is in other places?
It, it, yes, it's, it's, it's different because during the, the summer months, it really goes up.
It spikes more than.
So I, I hate to, I hate to interrupt you, but I've lived in Morgan.
We could look into that.
I lived in Morgan Hill for over twenty years now and it's like that every summer. Summers are hot in Morgan Hill.
Uniquely hot, but, but regardless, it was a historically hot period.
It was not. It, it is hot in Morgan Hill period, right? And it's, and you should know that and you should be, be, and I don't think you weren't. And I'm still not convinced you will be. So, so you have to prove, the trust level will rise with the proof of, hey, we got through a summer, two summers, three summers with no, no issues like this. And, and the last one I want to bring up to you is, you know, with the communication, that's another disaster, right? So the power is out. Nothing works in this town anymore. You can send me as many phone calls and emails as you want because I don't get them. And, and so how in the heck am I supposed to know what's happening? How am I supposed to inform the residents that are craving for updates? Because everything is down, including the cell phone towers. So I have to leave. I remember last time I had to drive to San Jose, remember that? To actually be able to use my, my, my cellphone to, to call our city manager. That's how that works. So, so I think you need to work with our providers of cell phone towers. So what can you do together with them to make sure that the communication system remains intact when the power is down? And that's not working either. The whole communication system is totally broken and that's a huge issue.
It is a huge issue and that was a big issue in the Santa Cruz Mountains as well. And I know the Congressman Panetta, that there is legislation, I think, that is being looked at to require telecommunications companies to have backup power. AT&amp;T is required, as I understand it, I'm not in the telecommunications industry, but they are required to have backup power, power going back to when they were AT&amp;T. But the other telecom companies, I think, are not, do not have that requirement. And so it's, it is something that is being looked at from a community resiliency perspective.
Yeah, so, so, so when you come back, I think you all should have a talk with all the providers in our area. What is the backup plan and how long can they back it up, right? If it is for twelve, fourteen hours like we had it, not just five hours, it was much longer. Can they back it up that long? And if not, we have no communication. You can tell me whatever you want from your PG and E headquarters. I will never see it until power is up again. That's a problem and that we need to solve. And I appreciate that you're helping us to solve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Borjoli.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with my fellow councilman about the spoilage. Nobody keeps receipts and that's just not a, really a good way on how to recoup something like that. So maybe taking pictures of the refrigerator in the area that's affected of outages for three days. So you just take the picture of the food and then you get, you give a percentage of the spoilage. And I'm sure that customer will be happy to even have a percentage of the, of the spoilage by taking a simple picture. So the process you have is, is not a good process. I, I want to get to Teresa, if you don't mind me calling you Teresa. You said, right out of the gate, the damaged equipment was because of high temperatures. And then fifty-one percent, I believe, were overheating. So the high temperatures were not caused by fire, it was caused by high temperature, right?
Right.
So.
And usage.
I'm sorry, and, and usage. So isn't the equipment rated? Don't you purchase and buy equipment that's rated for a certain temperature? And so were these rated at a lower temperature?
Would you like to speak that? Yeah.
So what happened there is usually the, the equipment that we're buying is, is rated at a higher temperature, but it's also expected to cool down at night when customers are not using the ACs. When this high heat wave, it was hot during the day, it was hot during the night. So the ACs are running maybe twenty-four hours a day and equipment did not have a chance to cool down, which they usually do at night.
Okay, so tha- that's a point of concern going forward rather with respect to getting new replacement equipment that maybe you can get it at a higher rating temperature before it starts to shut down. And then you also said the EPSS, you did increase settings after, you know, the, the first couple of times we were out for many, and that worked. So how does that affect high temperature when you do the settings?
About EPSS, yeah.
So. When the temperature goes up, usually the, the load follows, right? The ACs get turned on and the load increases. So we increase the normal load settings so they would not trip on normal load. But we still put them low enough that they would trip whenever there's a fault. Fault current usually provides a lot higher current than normal load. And, and so we tried to find the sweet spot between the normal load, they still be under the fault current. So that way the equipment trips.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the other thing we do is we have multiple devices on the line, right? We can have three, four devices in series. So what we do is coordinate them. So the first device operates and not the second device and not the third device. And that's what reduces the number of customers impacted by any outage.
But that's what I was saying earlier about sectionalizing. So we've added more sectionalizing devices so that the impacted area is much smaller. It's really just that segment that has had the fault.
Thank you. And finally, the corrective action of replacing the units. Have, have you identified any units that you didn't replace that you need to replace going forward?
Now that we, we have a new program that we're starting where we're going to, we're installing temperature sensors on underground equipment, underground transformers. So they would tell us when the transformer is getting to the temperature that it will, it's not going to be able to withstand. So we replace those transformers proactively.
Okay, we can include that in follow-up communications as well, what the status of that project is.
And, and, and so, I, you know, we're, we're asking tough questions because we were put under the heat also by our community. And so, but we, we do appreciate you working with the city. So I just wanted to mention that too. I, I don't have any more questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. We've had some heated conversations along the way. Tonight, I'm, you know, I'm reflecting at where we were. And I want to say that your response from all of you was really fantastic. And Teresa, I would really appreciate you responding to me. Yeah, I know we couldn't, we couldn't get through and you responded right back to me. And I know it probably wasn't fun, but I really appreciate that you did do that and I appreciate that you're here tonight. So, and Christine, I, I did get your emails and thank you for all my questions. When I would send you, you would always send me a response to them. Maybe not what I wanted to hear, but a response. So I, I appreciate that. I guess my concern is, though, we know that things are changing. We know with climate change that we're just there. And so that's the theme that I'm hearing is, you know, it's kind of managing where the heat is. And I've been in Morgan Hill my whole life and yes, in the evening, it usually does cool down. But we know looking forward that that probably is not the case. And so how are we planning resilience wise for that? Because I think that's really the important part that we need to get to. And there's lots of things that we can do to try and mitigate the impacts, like the claims, which I think are, you know, worthy. Everybody save your receipts this summer and we'll all turn them in should we have an outage. And that will be a great indication to PG and E. But, you know, if we can plan for the climate change and the resiliency. So looking at Arizona, looking at Texas, looking at these states that have so much heat that they endure. It seems to me like that should be the threshold where we're starting. That should be. That should be where we're looking to have all of our equipment upgraded to. So I guess my question is, is that the target? Has that begun already? And is that what we can expect to see deployed here for?
That's a great question. Do you want to talk about the replacement equipment that we've installed?
Yes, that is a great question. And actually, we did, we have started the process. We are in the process of reevaluating our maps to indicate the heat or what we call summer interior areas where the heat is about higher. And and so that's the first step in in finding the new maps. And once we have that, then we can start implementing them and putting equipment rated for higher temperatures.
Has that already happened for Morgan Hill? Are we already identified or do we continue to stay, you know, in the what was? Where we used to have much cooler, I mean, there are some places that don't have air conditioning, which is crazy now, but.
So all the new equipment that we install now for new businesses or for replacement is following this new standard where we're putting higher rating equipment. Um, but we're still gonna have to come back and and see how much of the existing equipment we can replace. And one way we're doing that is by doing these temperature alarms in the underground transformers. And that's gonna help us identify which transformer should be replaced first.
So if you could include that in your plan, that would be helpful as to when you're gonna do that. I mean, I would like to see if we've got a transformer that goes down, that we're not just doing, you know, a fix on something, then we know that that needs to be replaced. But we're actually working towards replacing that so that we can be resilient.
Again, we're making sure that we're not replacing equipment that is perfectly in good working order, that is within its useful life, that is not overloaded. We're checking on the overloading or the loading of each of our equipment, checking the heat on each of our equipment and making sure that we're targeting our replacement efforts where it really matters and where it's most needed. And so we can provide some more of that information when we respond as well. But that's, I think, what you're what you're saying as well.
So what just happened? All of those areas that did go without service. And have those all been identified? Were they problem areas that we that you would consider? You know, that would that would warrant being changed? So it's, you're saying if it's working, we're not gonna fix it. Any of these that maybe you had the the ten second or the second where it split off because of the the fire hazard, the wildfire hazard? Have you looked at those and said, you know, hey, this one is probably older equipment? It's also prone to being susceptible to being shut off because of wildfire risk. Um, maybe this is something that we need to look at upgrading.
Yeah, I think they're different issues, they're different questions. So the wildfire risk areas, the EPSS settings, what we've done is add more, and please, you know, supplement what I'm saying, added more sectionalizing devices so that we can continue to respond to the wildfire risk because there is severe wildfire risk and turn off the power. Unfortunately, that is the most effective fix in the short term, right? In the immediate term, but minimizing the impact. So the other set of circumstances is related to usage and overloading and and equipment. And and we've been speaking to that as well. What are we gonna comment on?
Yeah, and I was gonna say the same thing, that the outages that we saw on the protective equipment were mostly due to foreign objects coming into the overhead lines, not so much the the overload. Right? So what happened is you have two, three feeders on the same bank.
I'm gonna interrupt you, and I'm sorry. The reason I'm gonna interrupt you is because if something, if a foreign object fell on that, right? And it's already having risk because of that, and maybe it'll happen again. If that mop particular trans- transformer is an old one that needs to be updated, will that be updated? It's targeted as as an issue area. Will it be updated?
So what what he's saying, the fault would be a tree.
Right.
Little bird. It has nothing to do with the the health of the transformer.
I understand, but we're saying that this is, right, that there there's two reasons why this is happening. So if we can negate one of those reasons, I guess what I'm saying is I would like to see our system upgraded overall. And especially in these areas where they're prone to have outages that we focus there and that we make sure that that equipment is top of the line so that we don't have to worry that maybe it's one this time and maybe it's the other.
And just to add to that, the slide nine, I guess it is, shows that only four percent was due to animals. It's sixty-one percent is equipment.
Correct.
Right. So I just want to really isolate that issue because I know that it's more of an investment. I understand that it's a capital outlay, that it's a much more difficult. But that is where, you know, I mean, I'm feeling pinned against the wall because we're there. Our inbox is loaded, our text messages are frivol, and people are just not very happy. And I understand why. And so I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear that that's where we're looking to go so that PG&E understands and receives that message with all clarity. Okay, um, I also wanted to know, when we do have an outage, you know, you're seeing that the threshold is like a sixty to eighty percent certainty, knowing how long the outage will be, that it could be pushed back. Can you tell us like how long when you have an outage, what is the target to have an outage for?
I don't understand.
If you if there's an outage, we know that there will be outages. What is your target? Uh, what do you target an outage to last? An hour, five hours? What's your ideal target for that? Certainly not three days.
No, um, I mean, as soon as possible is the most direct answer I can give to that. There is no target other than that because every outage is different, right? So as as an example, right, let's say a tree brings down an overhead wire going to a house, right? Maybe, and it's in the middle of the day, it's noon in the middle of the day. We can get a crew out there, they can go put up that wire, maybe it'd take a couple hours to get that back up, right? Now let's look at somewhere that's a remote region where a road has washed out and a tree came down and pulled down five poles. That's a whole different story, right? So I can't tell you that it's gonna take the same amount of time for either those outages because they're very different, response time is different, equipment's different, right? Now, again, the goal is always to get customers back on as quickly and safely as possible, right? But there's a lot of factors that go into the restoration process.
Okay, so that that's a fair point. Then I guess what I would ask is that the communication has increased because our public safety really took a beating during the heat, during the the storms. They're out there, the traffic lights don't work, the communication doesn't work. You know, there's health risks that are being had, and we've got a very small team as it is. And so I guess if we could understand how quickly we would have some kind of indication, whether it's to Christina or Chief of Police, Chief Chang at the Fire Department, so that we, they know, okay, this is what's going on, we're gonna hear back within the next hour to two hours. And they can, you know, assess their teams as needed.
Yeah, and I think that's where we we have that cadence, right? We talked in the presentation about meeting, you know, with the first responders, with the fire chiefs and the police chiefs, right? I think having that cadence, and I I don't remember who it was that said it, but having a presence within the EOCs, right? That's something that will provide some additional information to you, more kind of boots-on-the-ground information. Ultimately, we want that information to be accurate for all of our customers. I want you and me to be able to go onto our website and see an expected time or estimated time of restoration and say, okay, it's gonna be two hours from now and have us get close to that. Um, we understand there's room to improve on that, and we're definitely looking at doing that. We feel, you know, not just from you all, but from across our territory, that customers want better communication. Um, and as a customer, I want better communication.
Just a bit real quick, again, I want to try to expedite as best we can. We appreciate that. You're gonna do your best to communicate. Any other questions, Councilmember?
Yes, we was talked about crews coming in setting up to prep for storms. I don't know if that was just a response because of the heat wave and then the storms. Is that something that you will continue to do every time? So we have yards all over the area. We have a Gilroy yard, we have South San Jose yard, we have a Cupertino yard. So we have crews really staged all over the service area. When there was the big issue in the Santa Cruz Mountains, we we did that base camp. That is not typical. That was that was a real, almost like a military base. We, you know, we knew that area was gonna have severe sweating and and landslides and whatnot. We do have local crews. I mean, we have crews that live here in Morgan Hill. Um, we have them dispatched locally as well. So we do have quite a a good number of personnel locally that are dedicated to this area.
Okay, great.
Yeah, for sure.
And then the last one is just when when we know that something's happened, there's an outage, there's a certain amount of time to go assess it and then let us know. You know, I think part of the problem was people being told, oh, the power's coming on at twelve midnight. And so they're waiting for twelve midnight, and then the next day, the same thing happens. And now they're two days later thinking, I would have gone to hotel or I might have gone to my sister's, but they didn't.
I can just say a hundred percent, I agree with you. PG&E understands that's a huge area of opportunity for us to improve. We are very focused on what we call ETORs, Estimated Time of Restoration. We know that having and conveying good quality information is exceedingly important. And we have not done a good job of that. So we've tried to do things like, well, let's estimate and put something in the system rather than not have anything. That doesn't work either. So truly, that is an area that we are focusing a lot of effort on right now to figure out how we can improve because we know it's it's a real problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking that.
Really quick then. One quick question.
Okay, um, it's actually a request. When you're putting together this report that we're asking for in the next, whenever you get to it, um, could you include also what percentage of the homes and businesses in the city have above-ground wiring and what percentage has already been underground?
That can be the report. Don't have to answer that tonight.
Yeah, that, yeah, in the report thing.
Yep, thank you. I've got one last question, then we're gonna go to public comment. Uh, PG&E was pursuing a redundancy project through a CPUC grant. Can you update on that?
I I don't know what that is. I'm sorry.
Uh, there was a grant, I think, there was a a some sort of a grant for a redundancy project.
Utility commission.
Oh, you don't, oh, I'm sorry. Do you not know the CPUC? You don't know the.
I do don't know the project I am talking about, Mayor Turner. And so again, yeah, if you want to send me more information, I'd be happy to look into that further.
Very good. You got it. We'd like to open this to a public comment. If there's anybody in the in public would like to make comments, we'll we'll time it for three minutes. Anybody?
Nobody here, but I do have John McKay on Zoom.
Okay.
For public comment.
Please, John, go right ahead.
Hello, hopefully you can hear me. I was on the city council during the outages and I live on the east side. That would be Jackson Oaks, Holiday Lake Estates and Jackson Meadows. And we suffered routine outlet, uh, power outages. It seemed to start several days at four o'clock and then went into the evening. Um, it became routine and it became very painful. And so I I haven't heard that being addressed. So I hope you could address why the consistent outages on those days. Um, the next thing is I sent a letter in at the time to PG&E through City Hall requesting that our residents be compensated outside of just a regular compensation for food and other losses because it's so difficult to determine. And it was more than just food that was that was lost. It was a extreme inconvenience, loss of business. It was just an extraordinary loss of ability to function normally. And so I had requested a a certain amount based on how much time power was lost. And I know that you talked about the CPUC having standards on how to respond to claims for losses. But I would like for you to explore the option to provide blanket credits or payments to those that did suffer extensive loss of power. And if you need help, I'm sure that we can talk to some of our legislators and go to the CPC, CPUC with you, if I help you out there. The one thing, I'm gonna finish real quickly here, and that is that we're moving into an age where we're increasingly dependent on electricity. The city and the city and others have instituted reach codes, which are which are now completely limiting the use of gas in homes, new homes, and there's trying to reach back and get into some of the older homes and the fact that we're moving to electric cars. Now, I hope that if we're gonna move to that kind of future, that we have what is considered to be reliable. And I know that when we talk about reliability, you can have ninety-nine percent, which is one cost, then ninety-nine point nine percent is another cost, and then ninety-nine point nine nine, it keeps on going. You get into the nines. And I understand that you cannot guarantee complete service at all times, but I think that we can do better. So those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, no other, no other hands, no other, nobody else online?
No further hands.
Very good. We will close the public comment. And again, thank you all for being here. We appreciate you taking the time and we look forward to the conversations with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, the council reports, Councilmember Borzioli. Yeah, yeah, hopefully very shortly, just briefly.
Thank you. Um, so on one of the, um, many, is the Water Commission quarterly meeting that I attended. And they gave an update on the drought. And although the reservoirs are full, the focus needs to be on continued conservation is was their theme. Um, another area of focus was water rates and a great deal of discussion surrounded that in that area. And so the suggested rate that they proposed was something that the commissioners uh, that were there kind of disagreed with. And they they voted to have the board go back to the drawing board and possibly reduce the rate even further. Still understanding that the rate is is for capital improvements. So i- it's a it's a topic that's very tough relative to rates, but they are, they are going back to the drawing board on that. The fact that we're consistently asking the public to conserve and reduce while many commercial buildings all over the county continue to water their non-functional grass. And and I asked them to look into that. And I actually got an email today that they they have a a plan for that now. So I'm gonna send that link to Christina so she can share it on our website. At the Joint Water Board, which was held in Gilroy, Director Santos really focused on trying to recapture water from Pacheco Reservoir instead of the water flowing into the ocean. And Director Villarilla asked to send a letter to various agencies and get a letter from each city. And I asked Chris Gianni to follow that through for me, which I'm sure he did. And and the focus for that joint water board was really the recycled water and 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 the pipeline in Gilroy. So Gilroy has a really good recycled water program that actually was, um, what what's the golf course down there? Eagle Ridge and and the surrounding community. So they have that and we're trying to get that pipeline to come down our way so we can have a program like that uh, in in Morgan Hill. But truly, that's gonna take possibly a couple of years to do. But at least the focus is there for recycled water. And then finally, I I got a, this is not part of my presentation, but I got I got an email indicating that it's it's very rude to wear a hat on the dais. And I, um, I understand that. And I I I respect when we go to the flag, I take off my hat. But, you know, I I have major operation on my head and I need to cover it. So I wanted to make it known, there are medical reasons sometimes where I have to wear something like this. So thank you, Mayor.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Uh, now for city managers' report, Christina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here. A few updates for you this evening. First is related to item number four on the agenda, and that's updates to the city's donation policy. Um, I wanted to mention that we are going to recommend that that item gets deferred to the next regular city council meeting so that we can have a discussion with the council about our recommended updates to the policy. The next item is related to the Health and Wellness Resource Fair. So on May sixth, from ten to one, the community is invited to attend. This is in partnership with our city's Parks and Rec Commission, as well as our school district, the Centennial. the Centennial Recreation Center's Senior Advisory Committee. And this is going to be held at the Community and Cultural Outdoor Amphitheater from ten to one. This event will showcase healthcare providers, behavioral and mental health workshops, health screening, senior resources, fitness activities, performances, food and beverages, raffle prizes and giveaways. This event is free for the community. More information on our website. The following week, Saturday, May thirteenth, we're excited about Open Streets Morgan Hill. And so this will be on Monterey Road between Main Avenue and Fourth Street. We'll be closing the road to vehicle traffic to enjoy activities and entertainment. You can walk, bike or roll through downtown, visit businesses, restaurants, the farmer's market, sidewalk Saturdays. So it should be a fun event and this is being funded in conjunction with a grant from VTA. Also really excited to announce that our annual pride flag raising ceremony is going to take place on Thursday, June first at six o'clock here in our Civic Center Plaza. And this year we're calling it Pride Fest twenty twenty-three. And we are going to partner this year with the library, the LGBTQ youth space, Santa Clara County Office of LGBTQ Affairs, Native Bakery and Catering. There will be light appetizers, folklorico dancing and resource tables that have been added to this flag raising event. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. City Mayor, or I'm sorry, City Attorney's Report, Mr. Luckin.
I have no report tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Don. Any to my colleagues, anybody have a report they'd like to share? Very good. Thank you. And now for public comment. The, this opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to our city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda?
I have no speakers.
Very good. Thank you. Now to adopt the agenda, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted? Councilmember Borzioli.
Just to clarify, Mayor, continuing item number four on the consent agenda.
Continuing.
Would be the request as part of that motion.
Continuing item number four. Very good. Gotcha.
I need to pull an item, so.
Okay, so we are going to do that, but first we're going to adopt the agenda as posted and we'll get to the consent calendar. Moved by actually Councilmember Borzioli, seconded by Councilmember Martinez Beltran. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? That passes five zero. And now for the consent calendar, is there any items wishing to be pulled?
Item number one.
Item number one. Very good.
That was mine too, but I'd like to make a comment on seven.
Okay, number one and then comment on seven. Okay, very good. Anybody in the public wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I have no hands.
Very good. Okay, so we will then vote on the consent calendar minus item number one. And of course, number four is being moved out as well. So moved to approve by Councilmember Martinez Beltran, seconded by Councilmember Borzioli. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes five zero. Okay, item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. I represent District D and we have a very large homeowners association in that district. And I have been contacted by many residents that live there regarding taking away lawn areas. And so I, I have a bunch of questions about that. I'm looking at the ordinance actually, and let me see, in item number A, it talks about homeowners associations. They're, they're saying that they can continue to grow grass if it's used portable water, not portable water. Is that correct?
I'm going to ask Chris Gianni and maybe Tanya Cruthers to come forward. And so I pulled up the ordinance and I think referring to the first section B with a definition of functional turf.
Right.
Okay.
I can jump in, but all of our, all the city of Morgan Hill's water that we provide is portable water. So we wouldn't be able to use Morgan Hill water for non-functional turf.
Non-functional, okay. I also read here somewhere in all of this that if they can prove the homeowners association that it is an area that is being used on a daily basis for recreation of the residents and they can get an exemption from that particular, let's say call it a mini park in the homeowners association. Is that correct? Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, turn your mic on there.
That's correct. They get to make that determination themselves.
Who's they? Oh.
The HOA.
Oh, the HOA, okay. And I also understand that letters have gone out to landscapers of different HOAs, correct?
We've been in contact with different HOA landscapers, but we haven't sent letters explicitly to the landscapers.
But did anybody get a letter?
We've reached out, we did reach out to the top fifty users of water on non-functional turf landscaping when we adopted the, the requirement, the ban on watering of decorative turf. And we also have been mostly so far interacting with the top users. This has been our focus.
Okay, is Morgan Village one of the top users?
Morgan Village, I do believe we've been working with them.
Okay, so you've been working with the homeowners association, not the landscapers?
We have been in contact with both the landscapers and the homeowner associations, all of them. They work closely together.
Do, did they get a letter or what did they get?
So typically we send out a letter as a first, as a first way of reaching out. And then we do have a water conservation specialist who works with the HOA and the landscapers to help them understand the requirements and to implement that tolerant landscaping and help them understand their options for, for switching over.
I would like a copy of that letter. Okay, and any notes you had from meetings that you had with the association? That one in particular, like I said, that is in my district. I am not comfortable passing this right now because I feel I don't have enough information. So.
Tonight's action, Councilmember Leavers, isn't to pass the ordinance. The ordinance has already been passed by the council. What tonight's action is, is reducing the level of, of our water conservation level. So what it would do is switch us for the, for the functional turf and other watering. It'll switch us from the two days a week to the three days for a week for the summer. So the action today does not, is not associated with the non-functional. Or if that's a, that's a permanent restriction that's already been established by the council.
Basically easing of the restrictions.
I understand that. Okay.
Okay, I read the whole thing a few times, maybe three. So I just don't want this particular homeowners association to get caught up in the fact that they're now unable to preserve some of the, what we call parklets, whatever you want to call them, within the community. It's a large homeowners association, many children and townhomes have small backyards, but people in condos have no grassy area. So this is a very important issue for me. So when would we, you're saying we already passed the ordinance, this is a done deal? Was I on council at that time? No, I didn't think so. No, I didn't think so. So, well, I, I can vote to approve, you know, the changing in the water from four percent. You know, that's fine.
Level four, not for, level four.
But I'm having a hard time that this is already passed. And I think further discussion needs to be had on this. And I also, like I said, want to see the letters that went out because I could tell you people are panicking and we're hearing all different things. I'm hearing they're ripping up every bit of grass we have or, you know, or there, you know, all these different things. And I need to, representing that community, I really need to be up to speed on this. And so I could approve the restriction change. And I guess the other part's already approved. So what would be my next step to continue the conversation?
You could introduce something for a future agenda item.
If I can just make a comment real quick.
Of course.
So Tanya and her team, it's not a hard restriction we've put on anyone. Our rebate programs, there are, we, we don't want trees to die. We don't want people taking out grass for functional turf that are parks, play areas. So we've been, we have not been strictly enforcing this and saying you need to turn the water off. We're, we're working with people and I think even in this case, we're, we're working with them. So we're happy to get you up to speed, but in no way are we, are we saying take out functional turf that's used. Like Tanya said, we're talking about turf that the HOA themselves is deeming non-functional. But what we are trying to work through is, okay, you have a strip of grass in a park strip. You have a strip of grass between a driveway that has no functional use. So those are the type of things we're trying to work with them on. So they're making that effort. So I think we could, we could get you up to speed and Tanya can get you up to speed on when we're out with any, any HOA or any group within the city. So we'd be happy to do that, but just we want to assure you, we're not, we're not telling, it, it's not a hammer. We're working with people because it's a delicate issue. We don't want trees to die. We want space for kids. What we're just trying to do is make sure that non-functional turf is not just watered because there are a lot of people in the community that are frustrated, on the other hand, where they see people watering turf when they've removed their turf.
Chris, one just point of clarification. So the ordinance, we went back to the council to sort of redefine the levels of drought and, you know, to be consistent with the state. And so that, that part was done, I'm looking at the date in, let's see, February of twenty-three. So can you just briefly describe what was in place before? Because really we were just changing the levels, I think, for that February twenty-three date. If one of you would speak to that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't part of that process, but my understanding is that we took, we took what was three different levels of drought and we turned it into six. So it's, it was just spreading it out and that provides more flexibility during times of drought for us to, to choose the appropriate level depending on the circumstances of the drought.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. Thank you. I just want to add too, you know, I probably need to contact the homeowners association because they have already put out bids to remove grass and put in drought resistant. And so they're ahead of what the homeowners want. And like I said, I'm getting a lot of feedback through email and phone calls. So I guess my next move will be to talk to the homeowners association in coordination with the landscapers. And then if necessary, I will bring this back. All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Beltran, no questions? Any other?
I got that answered. I just wanted, I'm glad we had that for discussion. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions by the council? An open public comment, any, anybody interested in making comments? Any cards on this? No cards? Anybody online?
No hands.
Close the public comment. And then if that's the case, can I get a motion then to approve or adopt? Thank you, Councilmember Borzioli and seconded by Councilmember Martinez Beltran. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, that passes five zero. Thank you. And then Councilmember Martinez Beltran, you had a comment on number seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight our commissioners do a lot of work. And these four in particular have been consistently on the planning commission. I wanted to thank them for their work and their service and all the time that they've dedicated. Happy to reappoint them. We're always looking to get new and energized commissioners as well. So that was all I really wanted to say. We rely on them quite a bit. They see all the land use before it comes here. We review a lot of the details and design. And so, thank you very much.
Again, I think that does need to be stated with all of our commissioners, but in particular with our planning commission, they are doing an exceptional job. And there's a lot of, a lot of information coming before them. And so before we go on any further, I think, can we take a five minute break? No, okay, you take a break. We'll keep working. Okay, five minute break. We'll be back. Thank you. Hi everybody. We're going to go ahead and get restarted. Thank you for allowing us that short break. We are now going to move into public hearings. Item number eight, approved solid waste management rate adjustment for 2023. Want a presentation on that?
Yes, Tanya Cothers will be coming up to take care of this item.
Hello again, councilmembers. Hi. Mayor, hold on. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. So my name is Tanya Cothers. I'm the Environmental Services Administrator for Morgan Hill. Nice to see you all and meet some of you. And tonight I'll be presenting on item number eight. Approve the solid waste management rate adjustment for 2023. Which button do I click? Sorry.
Which button? You got it?
Got it. Okay. So a little background on this. Recology franchise provides for our annual adjustments. And we required, we received a request in February for the annual rate adjustment. So the request was timely as required under the franchise agreement. The proposed rate changes that we're going to look at tonight are effective on July 1. City action regulates the rates by establishing a maximum charge. So tonight we're just looking at whether the rates were properly calculated and approving that maximum charge that they can charge this year. 2023 is the first rate adjustment proposed under the new franchise agreement, which became effective on January 1, 2023. So the rate adjustment formula, the annual rate adjustment is based on five different components. There is the CPI index with fuel costs, the solid waste disposal component, the recyclables processing component, and then exceptional costs. So I'm just going to briefly go through each of those items and give you an understanding of what we looked at to arrive at the proposed rate adjustment and also what the rate adjustment actually is. So the consumer price index component is, the portion of rates represents the cost for labor. It represents the cost for equipment, equipment, maintenance, facilities, administration, and just generally all the other reasonable costs. So in reviewing the consumer price index for all urban consumers in our area, there was a 6% increase in CPI between 21 and 22. So the next one would be fuel costs, which represents the cost of fuel used by the hauler to conduct their business and do the operations. And we reviewed the PG&E log of current and historic gas prices. And the average cost per ton between 21 and 22 went from 86 cents per ton in 21 to a dollar 28 in 22. So that represents a 50.18% increase for fuel costs. This solid waste disposal component is a cost for disposing of solid waste at the designated disposal facility. So we reviewed the most recent October billings from 2021 to 2022. So this has shown the year-over-year increase in cost from the disposal of solid waste at the facility. And the cost per ton increased from 25.67 in 2021 to 26.29 in 2022. So that's a 62 cent increase per ton for disposal. And the cost increase is 2.42% per ton for solid waste disposal. The next item is recyclables processing. We agreed on a $35 per ton cost for recycling for the initial term. And then we looked at the monthly processing costs per ton for November 21 to October of 2022. And through that process, we found that there was a 25.71% decrease for recyclable process, recyclable processing. And so this decrease in recycling costs gets passed on to the rate pairs. So this one actually resulted in a negative 0.64% on the overall rate adjustment. And then the final item is exceptional costs. And so the exceptional cost is the amount that the hauler can charge to recover costs for additional services that are requested by the city. Exceptional costs can include the cost of compost, which we're required to procure under 1383, which is a state law for mandatory organic recycling. Also, the costs, it could be to cover homeless encampment cleanup or vouchers at the San Martin Station for material drop off and a whole variety of things. It could be education and outreach that goes beyond what's in the contract and anything else that gets requested by the city to benefit the community as a whole. There's one other piece to the exceptional costs and that's the implementation funds. Whereas exceptional costs are sort of a true-up. So if we, if we did a hundred dollars of exceptional costs this year, then we would request, they would request those funds back next year and it would show up in next year's rate adjustment. Implementation funds are requested in advance. So for this coming year, and so, sorry, back up. The implementation funds are to cover costs associated with compliance with state and federal laws related to solid waste management and collection. So for this coming year, we're anticipating having to do some staff and to help to implement 1383, which is mandatory organics recycling. And also we're anticipating needing to do some design work for trash capture devices. The state is requiring us to install these trash capture devices throughout the city. So this year, we're requesting $449,704 in implementation funds, which equates to a 3.54% service rate increase. So in summary, we have 6% consumer price index increase, 50.18% increase in fuel costs, 2.42% increase in cost for solid waste disposal, and negative 0.64 for recyclables processing, and then 3.42% increase for exceptional costs. So that brings us to our final slide. Current proposal is when you look at all of that, a 9.92% increase. What we calculate it is we take all of those percentages of separately calculated costs and then we multiply it by like sort of the weighted piece of the overall rate. So if, for example, CPI was 6% increase and it counts for 83.5% of the total, of the total service rate, so we would multiply the 6% by the 83.5 to get our rate. And then we add them all up, come up with the 9.92 that you see there on the screen. And so to give you an idea of how much that is residential customers, this adjustment applied to the current municipal residential service rate at 38.22 is $3.79 per month increase, making the maximum permitted monthly charge for flatland customers 4201 and maximum permitted monthly charge for hillside customers $45.70. And then for businesses, getting a three-yard dumpster service once per week, the maximum allowable monthly rate will rise from 420.44 to 4.6215 cents. Questions?
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. You know, it's hard from our position to, with the data we have, to challenge the calculations, right? That's, it seems high to me, though I know a big chunk is inflation-related, but not everything is inflation-related. And so I, 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 did, did you really cross-check those numbers? Not the inflation part, that's the easy part to cross-check, but the other ones?
Yes, we went into all of the indexes and we, we asked for all sorts of backup data from the hauler to, to sort of justify the claim, the, the application package. So in the application package, you saw all of the, the items that they looked at and sort of where they were coming from. And we asked for backup data, including billing and logs and also a variety of other items to help cross-reference.
And if I may add to that, in addition to our environmental team doing it, our finance team also double-checked it. And a lot of the increase, you know, is due to SB 1383, which has stayed imposed, you know, and it's going to cost us a significant amount of money over the, over the next few years. And so this is just the first big step in getting there.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, like I said, I'm not going to challenge the numbers. I don't have insight into the data. But what I do, I kind of, you, you, you see this as an opportunity. I do think the level of service has degraded by the company. I, I clearly see that in our neighborhood. Whenever they come on trash days, the trash bins are all over the streets. Once they leave, half of them are not empty or a lot of trash is just all over the streets. You can wave them down. They couldn't care less. Hey, when you go to the San Martin Station to bring stuff, customer support down there is just simply horrible. I, I tend to be a friendly guy when I go somewhere and I was badly treated down there. They couldn't care less about customer support. And, you know, when you charge certain fees, I expect, you know, the more you charge, the higher my expectation is on service. I'm kidding. And I think our residents deserve good service. If the bins are out there, you know, they are to be emptied. If, I don't want to find them somewhere down the streets, right? Like, and it happens quite frequently and I hear that from people in my neighborhood as well. And so it's not just happening to us only. And then the other thing that I see lacking, I remember we had that in, I think in San Jose, but definitely in San Francisco, where a couple of times per year, you could put out big items like a sofa, something, right? A mattress or so. Not everyone has a big car, right, to bring that down to San Martin. I really think we should look into providing that kind of service. And probably many of us would be willing to, to pay and calling in. So it's so complicated. If they just would say, hey, on this day, Morgan Hill, twice per year, you don't even have to call in, which is whatever you put out there, we'll come and get, right? I think that would be a service that really would be appreciated. And I think it would help then eliminate some of the illegal dumping that happens across the area, right? I don't know how many mattresses I've counted just coming down into Morgan Hill along the way.
Councilmember, remind you, this is, this, this period right here.
So there's a question. Is this something, when you talk about fees, that you have considered?
Yeah, very good. Nicely done. Nicely done.
So as far as the franchise agreement, it's written and agreed to at this point. We do, as far as the, the poor service and getting the trash bins everywhere, we do have a pretty good relationship as far as communicating issues with our hauler and working with them to resolve it. So if somebody calls it in, we can work to fix it. And I can check up on it myself to make sure that it does get resolved. So you're always welcome to reach out to staff to help resolve the, the issues that you might be seeing.
And if I could just sort of echo that, their customer service, you know, I feel Coucher and I'm sure his, his successor really good and working with us. We bring a, we bring a matter to their attention. So if you become aware of a bin that's not, you know, emptied or it's being, you know, displaced, you know, on the other side of the street, let us know. And we will work with, with Recology to figure out a solution. And then.
Mayor, if I may, so, so most of the people I know, they, they call Recology. They don't call the city. And then the answers are not always great, from what I hear. So who should they approach at the city if not going to Recology directly?
Yes. Yeah. If they can approach me, I'll, I'll help take care of it.
If they're not, if they're not getting the response from Recology.
Yeah. Can you give us your private phone number, your email?
I can give you my business phone number.
No, that's what I'm just joking. What's the phone number? Let's be specific. Where, where can a customer, a resident go to if he has an issue with Recology? Where at the city? Who can they call or email? Yeah.
They can call or email me. I actually do get, yeah, tonyacarothers@morganhill.ca.gov. How can I?
Is it, can, can that be added? Is that added to the web? Is that information on the website?
An email address for environmental services is on the website. Yes. And then if you hit directory, I'm just confirming right now, there is, there are phone numbers and Tanya's phone numbers on there.
Okay, we'll find you.
Yes. If I may just add on the cleanup portion, I think at some point, and Chris might have more information, this city decided to not have cleanup days like you might remember Santa Clara has because it does present a health and sanitation issue because a lot of garbage just gets dumped on the streets. And so instead, what we've worked with Recology on is being able to drop off large items at the site. But you are correct, you would need a truck or somehow to get that mattress over to the place where you would drop it off. Done.
And I would just add, having worked in Santa Clara when we did the, the free garbage days, it was amazing how much garbage came from all over the Bay Area in Santa Clara. And that, that was, I think, one of the considerations for not wanting to do that.
Very good. Any other questions, Councilmember?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Councilmember Bojoli?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Tanya, I did ask this question prior to the meeting. So we have a mandate and an assembly bill that we have to abide by or else. And so the state doesn't give us funding, but they do give some to Recology, from what I understand. Am I correct? No?
We have, we have Mike here from Recology to say, Mike Kelly, I'm not sure if they would receive funding for, okay, he's saying no, they don't receive funding.
Okay, so. So we don't get any funding, so your time to do all this has to be consumed within your normal schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, what are we doing as a city to push back to the state to say, these mandates, we understand what you're trying to do, but we need financial help to implement these mandates?
We're not currently going after any major actions to pursue. A lot of this stuff has already been passed. Right now, the, the stormwater permit, which is going to include the trash amendments is being adopted. So we are taking an active part in making comments on that permit and going through the due process of, of making sure our voice is heard. We're working on subcommittee groups to help make sure that the trash amendment language, which is requiring us to put in all of these trash devices, is done in a way that's reasonable to the cities. So when we get the opportunity, we do participate in the commenting process. But we're not currently going after 1383 or the trash amendments because they're already adopted and done this.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions by the council? If none, we will go to, uh, we'll open public comment. Anyone looking to make comments on this item?
I have no hands.
Very good. Online either? Very good. We'll close the public comment. And if there are no further comments by council, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
By Councilmember Libers, second by Councilmember Spring. All in favor? Hi, any opposed? None? That passes five zero. Uh, other, under other business, except the Morgan Hill Police Department's annual military equipment use report. That would be, uh, we would have it coming forward. Is that the chief or? Oh, you, come on up. The North of you.
Yes.
The big guns.
Chief.
Two of them. There you go.
We have a chief.
Chief. Real quickly, is is there a way of turning on the air conditioning? I am roasting here.
I had to take it.
Ooh.
Mr. Gioni, a request to make it a bit cooler in here.
Will not affect PG&E by doing so? Yes, okay. Just having some fun, just having some fun with it. No, no, I'm gonna get a letter tomorrow. I'm sure that's gonna turn off my power at home. Right, that's right. That's right. All right, well, evening, Mr. Mayor, members of our council, our city teammates, our community members. My name is Mario Ramirez. I'm the captain with the Morgan Hill Police Department. Tonight, we're gonna be presenting the annual military equipment report um from twenty twenty two. Government Code Section seven oh two requires the law, local law enforcement agency to present an annual military use report for all military equipment. The report must contain a summary of the equipment used and the purpose of its use, summary of any complaints or concerns from members of the public about the equipment, the result of an internal audit, and if there's any adjustments made to the equipment or any um violations that were found, and the total cost of each of the equipment, including acquisitions, personnel, training, transportation, maintenance, um, and any other funding sources specifically related to military equipment, as well as the quantity uh the local law enforcement possesses of the equipment. And if the law enforcement agency intends to acquire any new additional equipment in the following year, so in this case would be for twenty twenty three. It's important to point out that military equipment um through AB four eighty one does not necessarily necessarily mean actual equipment used by the military. And this outline, um, those military equipment that was identified by AB forty one was unmanned, remotely piloted aerial or robot, so drones or SWAT robots, armored vehicles, command vehicles, revolver munitions and launchers, less lethal shotguns, less lethal forty mil projectiles and launchers, as well as long range acoustic devices, flashbangs and and more. It's important to point out that Morgan Hill Police Department possesses and uses mo- uh, most of these devices to help protect our community. Uh, so going into the equipment that was used for twenty twenty two, so in twenty twenty two, uh, we did not deploy our drone. We do have one Skydio drone. Um, however, during the twenty twenty year year, we did not deploy a drone. The mobile command vehicle was deployed a total of ten times. Um, with that, that was seven of those deployments were SWAT operations, so high risk search warrants or high risk arrest warrants. And three of those deployments were a result of special events. The forty mil launcher uh was deployed one time. Uh, that was deployed during the rest of a suspect of a possession of a stolen vehicle. And it was deployed after de-escalation tech techniques were unsuccessful. Continuing on, in twenty twenty two, the less lethal shotgun was utilized three times. And during those events, um, all three incidents, the individual that the the shotgun was deployed on was armed with some type of weapon during our encounter with that individual. Uh, distractionary devices, those are also known as flashbangs. We deployed those nine times in twenty twenty two and all nine times were deployed during a SWAT operation. Chemical agent canisters, uh, these are uh gas canisters uh was deployed once in twenty twenty two and that was deployed also during a SWAT operation. The pepperball launcher was deployed once in twenty twenty two. Uh, that was used as a result of our officers attempting to take individual in the custody, possession of a stolen vehicle, um, and after de-escalation techniques were unsuccessful, the deployment of the pepperball launcher was used. And we did not deploy our AR fifteen rifles or uh the Remington SWAT sniper rifle as we did not have any officer involved shootings in twenty twenty two. Moving on, the armored rescue vehicle was deployed eleven times. It's important to point out with the armored rescue vehicle, this is an acquisition based off mutual aid request. Um, we currently do not possess or own a uh armored vehicle. Um, so this was the armored vehicle from the sheriff's office and each time was deployment from a mutual aid request. Of those eleven deployments, they were all SWAT operations. Uh, six of those SWAT operations occurred in the city of Gilroy and five of those SWAT operations occurred in the city of Morgan Hill. The long range acoustic device, also known as the LRAD, was not utilized. And the armored, uh, the Rook also was not utilized, um, as this is a device or a piece of equipment that would be looking to acquire through grant funding. So some of our projected acquisitions for twenty twenty three, um, particularly when this um slide is talking about the consumables of the military equipment, and those consumable items include ammunition, chemical agents or smoke canisters, specialty munitions, i.e. the forty mil rounds, the less lethal munitions, as well as the pepperball munitions, um, as well as the distractionary devices. The reason why these are consumables is because they, depending on the event and depending on how much we use during the year, um, those, um, our supply can go up and down. So for instance, if we have no SWAT operations in twenty twenty three, um, our supply of chemical agent as well as distractionary devices will remain in place and there would be no need to purchase more. Uh, the more operations we have or the more uses of them, uh, may require us to have to go out and purchase more uh to ensure that we have plenty um of that equipment on hand for our operations. So in summary, the police report, uh, annual military report, uh, was outlined for our use of military equipment for twenty twenty two. This report has been posted on the Morgan Hill Police Department website for the last thirty days as required by law. Additionally, the report outlines the findings of the military equipment coordinator uh for such uh use. And it's important to point out, um, those findings were found that we were not in violation of any of our military use equipment. So recommended recommendations at this time is to approve the Morgan Hill Police Department's annual equipment, uh, military equipment report, as well as continue to use the military equipment by the Morgan Hill Police Department. And with that, I'll take questions. Okay, I just want to clarify, that is saying, can we go back one slide? Your saying recommendation is to approve on ours, uh, it is to accept.
That's correct, uh, Mayor. There is, there's no council action.
Okay, no council action here. Okay, we're simply accepting the report. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. I do have one question before we go to the council. I did see, uh, one of the questions I actually had written in on was the uh, the Lanco uh, G three Bearcat, the Bearcat, uh, as I understood it, that had already been, has that been purchased by Gilroy PD? That's correct. So Gilroy has purchased a Lanco Bearcat. Uh, they went to their council, I believe, two weeks ago. Uh, they got permission to purchase a Lanco Bearcat for the region. Um, at this time, we wouldn't be looking to um purchase a Bearcat for the city of Morgan Hill, but that may be something, um, in future years, we may be looking at depending on usage uh and needs for such a piece of equipment. For now, then that that uh three hundred seventy five thousand dollars would not be something we'd be looking in the near future to? Not in twenty twenty three. We're gonna not be looking for that. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions by councilmembers? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I thank you for your report. The the summary at the beginning states there should uh uh require a public meeting to be held. Uh, right, I can read it to you if you don't remember, the executive summary.
So this is the public meeting that we have it here.
So is this the public meeting?
Yes.
That is widely publicized.
Are you saying, you're not saying this meeting tonight, right? That's my question. This would be considered the public meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and it was publicized on the four one one, um, thirty days out of this meeting. So when we posted the report on our website, it was posted, um, for this to be the public meeting.
And in in council, we may have had some miscommunication. This won't be the last public meeting we have on this.
That's what I had. I thought there would be a town hall held at a different time. Uh, is that correct?
And so the statute requires the report to be presented to the council.
Right.
And then within thirty days after it's presented to the council, there is a, an opportunity for the council to, or the community to ask questions of our police department, so.
In a separate meeting.
In a separate meeting.
So what you're going to, I think.
I I don't know. I am getting different answers here. So so let let me ask my question again. It's 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 in the report, the executive summary. It says the Morgan Hill Police Department shall hold at least one well-publicized and conveniently located community engagement meeting. So refer to uh our city attorney. So that will have an after effect, not.
Yeah, within thirty days of this meeting, we have.
Thirty days are not mentioned here. That's why I don't know we have to have that.
Okay, um, this didn't have to be a, a public discussion item, but it is because we anticipated the council would have questions.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and and then the, and I and I I see you published that report already, right? Uh, because you had to, thirty days prior to coming here. The the, uh, did you get any feedback from anyone? Did anyone read it? Did anyone know it got published prior to us getting to agenda?
Yes, one community member did provide the city with feedback uh as a result of the report and we've made contact with that individual as well.
Okay, then let me ask differently. When you published it thirty days ago, I didn't know it got published thirty days ago because I didn't know it would be on tonight's agenda, right? Uh, so how how do we know when it gets initially published to have?
I included it in our four one one and so.
That way it was?
I think for cup, two consecutive weeks, maybe.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good, good. I didn't read that, that made, um, but I I thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Chiefs, Captain.
Yes, um, so 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 only one, one, you got only got one input so far, so far, one question, okay? Thank you. The and and so we have to do that every year now?
We, and we would come before you and um present our findings for the year.
How much time did it take you to?
Um, my man hour is probably, uh, it's probably about eighty to a hundred hours just to put it together.
How much money did we get from the state to reimburse you for that?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. I thought so.
Of course, right? Yeah. Any other questions? Councilmember Borjoli?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I I was fortunate enough to go to the CPA class where you did present this many years ago. And you you made a uh a a couple of statements on how by having this type of equipment really uh helps protect the men of the police department in many, many ways. And I think it would be good if you can give one or two examples on how this equipment helps protect our offices in a situation like a SWAT event. Um, and and it also uh helps um our our citizens too. So if you could just give a quick something on that, I think it would just be helpful.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example with the armored Bearcat. As we know, a couple, about a month ago, there was an incident down in Gilroy where an individual was um uh barricaded in uh his residence and shooting off rounds. The Bearcat that you actually saw in the on the picture today um was actually shot at multiple times um as a result of that incident. Um, and the officers that were at that incident were actually inside the Bearcat during that incident and they were protected by those rounds. Um, the Bearcat itself is a um rifle rated protection, so rifle rounds could be shot at that and our officers are safe. So during a SWAT operation, as the operators move close to the residence to um begin either the surrounding call out or um to make entry to that residence, they're protected through armor. So if uh the individuals would start shooting rounds at them, they have the ability to stay back and be protected. When we look at the other items such as the forty mil launcher or the shrapnel, that provides our officers to have distance, um, greater distance than um than being close as a taser. We can be further away, which time gives, distance gives us time. They're able to work with de-escalation techniques without having to get too close, which is gonna uh create a confrontation. And the same thing with the pepperball gun, that allows us to be further away and interact with the individual to be able to buy the officer's time to continue their de-escalation techniques as a way to um bring a a quick and a successful resolution to an incident.
Okay, so bottom line is it does help keep our officers safe out there in in many different events.
Absolutely. As it, it keeps our community safe as well. Um, without these options, the other options would be let, would be less, would be left with us with a, with either our handgun or a rifle. So this provides us options to use so that we don't have to go to an automatic lethal um approach. We can use less lethal options where we'll be able to take the individual custody without having to bring uh a lethal harm to them.
Thank you, Captain. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain, for your report and fulfilling my questions, both Captain and the chief. Um, I still need to go and look at your new equipment that you have, so I plan to do that. But I also, you know, I'm go, I I definitely want our men and women to be safe when they're confronting unfortunate um scenarios that they have. But I also want our public to feel the trust and the support that this is these, this equipment is being used responsibly and it's being used when it's appropriate and that there is no overreach. So with that, if you could just share with us a little bit of what kind of training, what kind of access, who gets, you know, how are you able to use the different equipment that is available? Um, that would be great if you could just walk us through that.
Yeah, so for all the, um, so some of the equipment, uh, only specialized officers that are trained, i.e. those that are assigned to our SWAT team, could actually deploy those um, that equipment. So the distractionary devices, the Remington, the Remington uh sniper rifle and as well as the gas can uh canisters, those are only deployed by our SWAT team. The Bearcat is deployed by our SWAT team. Um, and in that, those individuals will have to go through specialized training um that is approved through the California Police Officers Standards and Training, the Post Commission. Um, and then we have yearly training that our officer, yearly updated training. But the other devices, they are, our officers still also have to go through at least a post-certified training class. And then each year we hold um recertified training on those pieces of equipment, as well as qualifications on those pieces of equipment. Um, when it comes to our rifles, for instance, uh, all of our officers are uh outfitted with rifles. They do have to go through a forty hour patrol rifle course and then they have to qualify quarterly on that rifle.
Okay, excellent. And um, if somebody, let's say, an officer is on probation or there's something that has impacted their status, uh, maybe there's a a case that's under review, are they able to have access to any of this equipment?
As long as they're still uh employed and as long as they are not placed on administrative leave and they're still out um working as a full functioning police officer, yes, they do.
Okay, and they wouldn't, there, if they had, if there was some open case where there was questions on how they had handled the situation, that would not um prohibit them from having access to any of the military equipment?
It would depend uh on the circumstances of what the allegation is and what the investigation is into them. Um, if it's something we feel that the individual needs to be placed on administrative leave, then that's what we would do. And at that point, their police officer powers would be uh stripped until um the conclusion of that investigation. Um, but without, it it's hard to say without.
No, I understand. I just want to ensure that that, that safety check is there. Um, and then if you could just tell, as far as maintenance and and all of that, what kind of costs are associated with us having military equipment? Are there additional costs that we incur or?
Yeah, so in the um, in the report, I believe it's on page thirty eight, um, we outline the cost of the military equipment for each of those and what the um police department spends to maintain um and possess those items. Uh, there is uh annual cost for that. So for instance, our rifles need to be maintained where our um department armors go through each of the rifles to make sure that they're functioning, make sure all of the equipment inside, um, and all the mechanisms are working properly. Um, and those uh individuals go through the um actual manufacturer armor, manufacturers armor course, so they understand how to take the the farm all the way down and build it all the way back up uh to make sure that it works properly. Uh, so those things are being done and are checked uh every year um for all of our equipment to make sure that they are functioning and maintaining at the level that they need for operational use.
So I guess is there um a difference between maybe where we were operating before with the budget for the PD and what this might be an incremental increase that we would see every year?
No, so the the operation budget um and the maintenance of this equipment is included in it in the police department's operational thing.
Okay, that's what I want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there are other questions, we'll open the public comment. Do we have anyone interested in speaking on this topic?
I have no speakers on Zoom or in person.
Okay, very good. We will close the public comment and uh with other comments, we will just accept that report. Uh, Chief, Captain, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Good report. Uh, item number ten, adopt ordinance prohibiting possession of firearms in sensitive places. Review will be presented again. Welcome back to the podium. All right, we'll go next one. Uh, so this is a, um, to put in a background on this, um, item. Uh, in June of twenty twenty-three of twenty twenty-two, the US Supreme Court handed down the Burnin' decision, which, uh, essentially eliminated the good cause doctrine for the issuance of CCWs. As a result, um, during the twenty twenty-two legislative session, um, the California legislation attempted to pass SB nine eighteen, which would have included sensitive zones as where, uh, individual may or may not be able to carry a firearm. That bill lost on the, on the last day of the session by one vote. Um, and that, uh, has been renamed this year to SB two, um, and that's currently going through the legislative process. The reason we're bringing this forward today is we do believe as a result of the Burnin' decision and the, um, and with the elimination of the good cause, there will be an increase of requests for CCWs, especially within the city of, of Morgan Hill, but throughout the, uh, the state of California. So the proposed ordinance would prohibit the carrying of firearms in sensitive places, um, exclusively authorized by the US Supreme Court. And some of those case laws that help us identify what those sensitive places are, uh, through the case law. It was, uh, the District of Columbia versus Heller, which is a two thousand eight decision, as well as the McDonald versus City of Chicago, which was a two thousand and ten decision, and then recently the Burnin' decision in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the sensitive places under the proposed ordinance will include government offices, schools, courthouse and polling places. So the recommendation that we have for today is open and close the public hearing, wave the first and second reading and introduce the ordinance prohibiting the carry of firearms in sensitive places.
Very good, thank you. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Okay, I feel like I, you know, just won the lottery or something.
That's right, hey, go.
So I'm just wondering, when we're looking at this, there, I looked at the different places that we have, I had some questions and you know, wondering about places that maybe aren't included there, if we might be able to look at those in the future or what, what the recommendation would be. But, um, when I think of public transit or, uh, let's see, what was the other one I was thinking would be where a sports complex, maybe it's not necessarily government or school, but Pop Warner, um, uh, Pony Baseball, uh, Spirit Softball, those might be areas that we could look at as well. Um, I also thought about medical facilities, uh, and then a cemetery or funeral, um, I guess funeral parlor. And the reason I'm, I'm thinking of those is when I think of, you know, sometimes I've, I've seen things happen, there have been, that's where people tend to maybe be a little more charged or, you know, at a funeral, maybe family members don't get along, I don't know. But these are places where I think people should be able to be in peace, worry free. And so as I was looking at some of the places that you had included here, I wondered if those were something we could include or if that's something that maybe at a later time we could look at.
Um, Councilmember, we can, we can look into each of those places. The recommendation for tonight was based on, um, what is, what the Supreme Court has clearly said are sensitive places. Um, and there are other places, you know, there's, um, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has identified some other locations that could be identified as sensitive places. The Supreme Court's list isn't exhaustive, but we thought the best place to start was what we know we can justify today based on Supreme Court case law. Um, but we're, we're more than happy to, to look at those additional places. I think your, your rationale makes some sense, so it's, it's worth spending the time to look at those and come back. But for today, we're only looking to do those places that we know the Supreme Court has said we are sensitive places.
Okay, I mean, that, that sounds reasonable. Just, I'm thinking families, kids, those are the places that come to mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, my question is kind of related to that, and maybe I just got the answer, even though it's not the answer I'm hoping for. But, you, you know, places, I'm surprised that places such as churches are not mentioned, right? Uh, but places where, you know.
Yeah, so, um, represent places of worship are one of the areas that, um, is, is more black and white, surprisingly to me, but more black and white the other way and that, um, that it's not considered a, a sensitive place. So, um, I, I, um, but where there are some, uh, not to say that churches themselves can't determine that they don't want firearms in location and, and certainly, um, a business that, that, or, or a church or an entity like that that says no firearms, um, has control of their property and can say no firearms, and they have that ability. Um, question is whether the government can say that firearms are prohibited in those places and, and that's where, um, where we can't. That grayer areas are things like, um, areas where the public property, whether or not where government administration is taking, taking place, and that, those are places that the case law to date has said we can, um, we can consider sensitive places, but, but there's some conflicting case law in other circuits. Eventually, that's going to get to the Supreme Court, where, where it will get hammered out. But as of right now, those are sort of gray areas that we can, that we will certainly take a look at and, um, and come back with recommendations.
Yeah, I, I share, uh, what my colleague said. I, I think the list should be longer. Uh, but that's my personal opinion. I'm sure there's others that strongly disagree with me. Uh, um, but it, but then in, in that context also, uh, how, how does that apply then to large public events that, that we used to have in this city, right? Uh, how, how are they covered on here? Did you, can those organizations that have these events say you, it, you cannot come in here even though you have a permit, and is that lawful to, to say you cannot come in? Well, what is the law there?
Well, so if it's a private event and it's closed off to the public where you have to pay for entry, they can choose and decide what can come in and what can not come out, whether they have a permit or not. They can say this is a private event, you're not allowed to bring that in here, you need to leave. Business owners can post signs and say you're not allowed to carry a firearm in this residence, in this establishment. Um, that's the, their right that they can do. For CCW, for the applications of Morgan Hill, for those that, um, will be applying for Morgan Hill, will actually have a longer list of restrictions for CCW holders in the city of Morgan Hill. This ordinance is, um, in place to, for those individuals that may hold a CCW, uh, from another jurisdiction coming into our jurisdiction, um, to, uh, mark what you can, where you can and can't carry. Uh, but with that said, with SB two, this list will actually grow. Um, and we do expect there will be, it will be litigated, um, as multiple people have already, um, opposed the bill, have already said that they will be, um, filing suit if it passes. So we will see how this plays out through the courts. Um, I think it's going to go up at least to the Ninth Circuit to figure out where, where it stands. But in private events like a large community event, um, that's blocked off where you just can't freely enter, uh, the event organizers can restrict the access, um, of that individual if they so choose.
And what, what about large community events such as the Freedom Fest? We have folks on Freedom Fest here. How, how does that fit in here?
So with that, since it's open up to the public, um, an individual can carry, um, at that time. Um, we, again, SB two, um, has areas that will be addressing those things. Um, this today specifically, um, are areas that the Supreme Court has explicitly said these areas are considered sensitive areas, um, and we came forward with these areas because we know, um, we have the, um, legal backing from the United States Supreme Court on it.
Right, I, I do understand that the, can, can you see my concern? My concern is that really when we have the large gatherings, right? And then, and, and, and even organized by, by private nonprofits, right? And then when it's enclosed, they can say no, and it's open. Can they say yes or no? Do they have any say?
Um, if it's on public property and it's open to the public, then, then it, then we, yeah, then it's not someplace that they have control over. And as a government agency, we can't say no anymore. Um, I, in, if it's a, um, even if it's in a public park, if it's a private event within a public park, so it's a, it's a, you know, somebody's rented out the park and they're paying to rent out the park and they've got the exclusive use of that portion of the park that they're renting out, then they can say, um, no, we don't want firearms at our event. But when it's a public event, open to the public on a public street, then, um, then we can't restrict people who have valid licenses to carry a concealed weapon from carrying their concealed weapon.
The, and, and, and is it fair to say that, and I, I understand where we're coming from, that this is kind of the start? And, and that the list of where it will no longer be authorized to carry a weapon where there's certain safe places, that we will expand that list down the road if we're made it.
Yeah, the, the state, I, I think it's most likely, I think as, as Captain said, most likely the state's going to do that. Um, but to the extent that, um, we've been asked by Councilmember Martinez Beltran and, and others to look at it, um, at other areas where we might have some ability to control. Uh, we can, we can certainly come back with that. Um, it's just, we want to get something on the books now that we're going to be issuing permits and we have people receiving permits from outside of our, uh, from outside of even our county because the permits are, once you have a permit, you have a permit, so we want to make sure that we've covered all our bases for those coming in from the outside.
Okay, then let me ask differently. So if the state were to do it, we wouldn't have to do it, is that correct? It would be covered by state law.
It would be covered by state law, we wouldn't need to.
And then will we rescind this, what we're discussing?
We wouldn't necessarily have to rescind our ordinance. Um, the state on, is likely, and the way that the legislation is drafted now is, will, um, is going to say that it's not their intention to occupy the field of where firearms are restricted, but simply to set a guideline. So we wouldn't necessarily have to rescind our own ordinance. It's like we're going to be duplicative, uh, when the state serves, it's going to be more expansive, but it's not something that we're not adopting this with the idea that it's only going to be in effect for a few months until the state can pass something.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now for the question. All right, thank you. Any other questions by council? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
I have no speakers in person or online.
Very good. We'll close the public hearing and there being no further comment by the council. We would need to get two motions here, number one being to waive the first and second readings. Can I get a motion? So moved, moved by Councilmember Spring, seconded by Councilmember Borjoli, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That being none, that passes five zero. Uh, second emotion, uh, we need is to introduce an ordinance prohibiting the carrying of firearms in sensitive places. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Spring, uh, seconded by Councilmember Martinez Beltran, uh, all in favor?
That's really, I was anticipatorily raising my finger.
Yes, forgive me. Any public comment, forgive me. Thank you for, yeah, yeah, you should have went ahead and interrupted me.
I'll read the ordinance.
Got it, got it.
Um, an ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill enacting section nine point zero four point zero five five, carrying of firearms in sensitive places, chapter nine point zero four weapons of title nine, public peace, morals and welfare of the municipal code of the city of Morgan Hill regarding the prohibition of carrying firearms in sensitive places.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
So now we need a roll call vote.
Well, very good, thank you. Do a roll call vote.
Eric Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Spring. Libers.
Aye.
Borjoli.
Aye.
And Martinez Beltran.
Aye.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Item number eleven. Receiving the monthly, uh, thank you, Captain, thank you, Chief. Receiving the monthly budget update and, uh, city manager authority, that, well, item number eleven, we will get an update.
Yes, and Monica Delgado, our budget manager, is headed up here to provide our budget update. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community members and teammates that are here with us tonight. My name is Monica Delgado and I'm the budget manager. The item you have before you tonight is a mid-cycle budget update. This evening, I'd like to take some time to provide a budget update. Review our recommended budget amendments for the current fiscal year and next. Give an overview of our Cal Fire Agreement as well as a few other operational items. The city's biennial budget was adopted in June of twenty twenty-two. As you see highlighted on the left here, um, of the biennial budget cycle, we're just at the end of our first year of the two-year budget cycle. The most recent county estimates regarding property tax show an increase of about half a million dollars each year of the forecast. This is partially attributed to higher receipts of excess educational revenue augmentation funds from our RDA residual distributions and a slightly higher property tax assessment. Most of the latest projections from HDL, our sales tax consultant, we're looking at an increase of about half a million dollars in sales tax in the current year. The city is expected to see a slight increase in interest income. Spells an increase in the franchise fee from ecology due to the recent waste rate adjustment from ecology. Staff is recommending an addition of two and a half FTE. The first FTE is for, um, an environmental programs coordinator, which is funded fifty percent by way of ecology implementation funds. The other half would be funded by our development services, um, fund, which is offset by a reduction in contractual services. The second FTE is an accounting assistant slash technician position. Um, this position is cost neutral in, uh, next year, next fiscal year, which is twenty-three, twenty-four. However, we will see a slight, um, fiscal impact starting in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five of thirty thousand dollars a year. Final, um, addition of the half FTE is actually reclassifying a half FTE for municipal services assistant position to a full FTE. Um, this, as well as cost neutral and will be offset by a reduction in temporary staffing costs. So tonight, we're formally requesting budget amendments for four items, including ecology implementation funds, ICMA mobility grant, California Energy Commission grant, and additional, and an additional appropriation in our employee benefits fund. The implementation funds from ecology, uh, is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The city is recommended using these funds to offset fifty percent of the environmental services programs coordinator position. As mentioned earlier, and for design funds for future trash capture devices. The ICMA mobility grant is thirty thousand dollars and will be used to advance local activities designed to boost upward mobility for residents. The California Energy Commission grant of forty thousand dollars will be used to implement solar app plus, which is an automated online, uh, permit, an online permitting platform for standard residential solar and storage systems. Due to a higher number of staff retirements, turnover and cash out requests, an additional appropriation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is needed in the employee benefits fund. We also have a change in operations. Um, effective July first of this year, public services will be taking the lead on all graffiti abeyment activities, uh, working closely with the police department. So the city's been in a cooperative agreement with Cal Fire for fire-related services since January twenty thirteen. Tonight, staff is recommending a new five-year agreement effective July first, twenty twenty-three with a not-to-exceed contract amount of fifty-four point nine million dollars over the five-year period. Staff is recommending a budget of forty-eight point eight million over the five-year period. The contract amount differs in that the contract has pre-approved positions that in to address fluctuations in staffing due to changes in shift from the seventy-two hour shift to the sixty-six hour shift, um, staffing of the third fire station as well as budget savings. These additional positions have been authorized by the state, which gives the city and Cal Fire the ability to cooperatively add additional positions as needed without having to move through the lengthy state process of modifying or amending the agreement. We prepare our mid-cycle budget update, we are methodical in planning for what may be on the horizon. Included as part of the forecast is the addition of two police officers, um, an increase in PERS, as well as the city's portion of, uh, the P bid, starting, all starting in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. An increase in PERS as well as the city's portion of the P bid, starting, all starting in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So as a result of all this, let me turn your attention to the general fund forecast graph. But the noted changes, we're still projecting to end. The forecast a year of twenty-seven, twenty-eight at twenty percent. This includes all the recommended additional appropriations as well as what we see on the horizon. Other recommendations tonight include the delegation of authority to the city manager for all vehicle slash equipment purchases. Have been approved in the adopted budget. In addition, an update to the user fee for electric vehicle charging stations. Eliminating the plug-in fee and increasing the per kilowatt hour fee. From twenty-five cents to thirty-five cents, as well as delegating the authority to the city manager to make future fee adjustments. As necessary to align with market and cost recovery. Finally, is our recommendation for community funding. We received twenty applications from fourteen organizations. The city has appropriated two hundred thousand dollars for community funding. The total funding requested is just over two hundred and fifty thousand. The city is recommending funding at two hundred thousand. Just under thirty-four thousand of that in rental fee waivers and the remaining in cash funding. With that, here, we have six recommendations for tonight. And I can go through each one of them. Accept and file monthly financial investment report, adopt resolution authorizing changes to the adopted twenty-three and twenty-four budgets. Approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four community funding recommendations. Allow us the city manager to enter into a new five-year agreement with CAL FIRE. Delegate the authority to city manager to make all future vehicle and equipment purchases as approved in the adopted budget. And finally, approve an update to the city's electrical vehicle charging station user fees. And delegate authority to the city manager to update all future EV user fee schedules. That concludes my presentation and my teammates and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Libers.
That's all?
That's you. I was confused.
Thank you for that. On the P bid, okay, is, I know we have a person. Who's in charge of that, an employee, is that, is she already being funded? And you're asking for an increase for next year? Well, I don't know where she falls into this, okay?
Okay, I can help with that. The P bid does not have a person, but you did, the P bid is just starting. We have a existing T bid that has a funded position.
Okay.
The P bid is just getting started right now.
Okay.
So that, that, that is funds that the city will pay. Because we have properties in the downtown area, so we have to pay our portion and then it will go to the P bid. And the P bid has, the P bid board has not chosen to hire staffing or anything at that level at this point.
It's totally volunteer then?
Well, the P bid's just established, so there's been no revenue collection yet, so it is. Is the representatives of the downtown, including representatives from the city as well as representatives from the downtown property owners.
Right. A number of years ago, we had the P bid and there was, I think, thirty-three thousand dollars in there. Where is that money? Did, did that get spent in another way? I lost on to address that.
So the, the funds have to be used for their intended purposes.
I know.
They haven't, there hasn't been an entity to use them for their intended purposes, but now there will be, so we will have an opportunity to.
So the money's still there?
The money is still there and it's still available to be used for the intended purposes of, for the downtown.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, and then I have another question. Looking at the budget. At workman's comp, we're at seventy-one percent of for the year. Does that include the PD workman comp or is that just the teammates within the city?
Good evening to mayor, councilmembers, that ring, finance director. Yes, the utility expenditures of seven, seven hundred percent you stated, yes, in, in, in cover. It does cover all the expenditures, including worker comps for PD?
PD, okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to ask, so are there, are there other ways that funds can be requested? I know there's an organization, they've done events and they're looking to do that. And this is one way that we do it. I know some things have changed since we have the policy.
Yeah, so that council policy allows for requests that. Anyone requesting funds comes in with their applications in February that we then. Going forward to you in this packet tonight with the budget. However, the policy allows for a provision for anyone, any one council member to. Who receives a request to bring that request forward independently as long as it's ninety days before the event.
Okay, thank you. I also noticed when we were doing, when I was looking at this, that the twinkle lights were. Half of that had been, I guess, kind of deferred to the new P bid that you're talking about. And that we were still be supporting fifty percent of the twinkle lights. And that will be, is that something that is going to be continuing? Will, will continue to do the fifty percent for them or how did we arrive at that?
So, as we just talked about, the new P bid is not collecting, hasn't collected revenue yet. And working, I can, our recommendation is funding half of the need for the, for the twinkle lights. And then the downtown association is the one who does it. Recommending either they look at funding the other half or potentially work with the U bid to fund that. Their recommendation, recommendation is reducing the funding to. To half of what it, half of the need.
Well, thank you for doing that. I'm excited that you are, that we're supporting them at least as we try, I know we're trying to transfer, but I think they still need that support, so that's great. And then as far as when we have, is there? When I'm, I'm looking at there's. There's some in here that are for more like a capital outlay. Do we have a budget where we can have them go? For capital maintenance or capital outlay versus going towards an event where residents can participate, kids are participating for programming?
So, and I know you're funding, referring to the community funding requests within the updated policy. From a few years ago, all requests for funding from the city. Come in together where, whether it's an event, organizational support. Support for maintenance and improvements. So all those come in together so the council can review those together. So that's how it works at this point. The other fund would still be a request from the city's general fund because that's the discretionary revenue we have to provide.
Okay, so whether it's programming, event or maintenance, it's coming from this community pot?
Those requests can be made, yes.
Okay. Um, I also wanted to ask about. The firehouse and when we expect that we would have staffing on the firehouse? If you could just, I don't know if you were able to go back to that slide that was on the CAL FIRE?
The new contract with CAL FIRE effective July first of this year, and it does include staffing for third five station. But however, in our budget, we don't budget funding until the. Next fiscal year, which is twenty-four, twenty-five, by a time when we hope that the fire station will be built.
So, so we are allocating funds for twenty-four?
Yes, in the budget, yes. And in the contract, it does include staffing for third five station.
Okay, and we believe that in one year that we're going to have staff in the, the new fire station?
Yes, the funding is there.
Right, I understand funding is there, but we believe that in one year. Where we will have a fire station off of Butterfield where we can have staff.
Not a year from today, but at the, before the end of the calendar twenty-four year.
Okay, so then what would happen for those, those dollars that are budgeted for twenty twenty-four? Because it sounds like it would be at the end of twenty twenty-four. So if we've budgeted for that year, what happens to those funds?
So CAL FIRE bills is based on actuals, not based on what we've budgeted. So if for some reason the construction was delayed.
Yes.
We wouldn't be charged for the additional staffing. So they, they bill us based on basically their hours and bodies that are in the station. And we will have pulled a certain amount of money from our budget and held it for twenty twenty-four, correct? It's appropriated in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, yes.
So if, if for some reason the construction doesn't happen on time, then we'd have budget savings. And I guess I'm asking where that budget savings would be appropriate?
The general fund.
But we go back to the general fund, correct? Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were done. Please, go ahead.
Um. I just lost my train of.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, yes, also I wanted to ask about the. The vehicles and the replacements and will we? Have an, you know, will there be some public opportunity for that to have input or what have you? We did. Get a public comment on that. I do read your public comments, so. And one of the expressed concerns was that they really appreciated that this is where we would come and the public had a chance to kind of. Bring and talk about new ideas and advances and things of that sort. So how would that play out in that scenario? So that would be usually in the adopted budget process. When we publish the recommended budget, there's a list. In our equipment replacement fund that shows what we are planning to replace for that year. Or for the two-year cycle. But that's. That wouldn't have the, you know, the display, I guess, here that you get. That's something they would have to go into the reports. Find the report and see what the update is on those vehicles. Yeah, and perhaps we can, you know, highlight it a little bit more since there's a little bit of a change in how we manage that moving forward. Those are my questions. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Can, can we go to slide number one? Yes, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out where we are. We're in the.
Sorry, we're in February to June and on my side is the left side. You'll see it's highlighted like blue.
Yeah.
So the starting is, is the beginning of, of the whole cycle in January and we're kind of working our way all the way around. We'll be back before you know it with a recommended budget for the next two-year cycle.
Okay, so next, next April, you will come with the recommendation, recommended, okay. Yeah, I was. Oh, that's the meaning of the blue then. That answered my question without me asking it. The, and then let me see, what's the other question I have? So the, so on slide number, was it? Five, I think it, yeah, on slide number five, if you don't mind. I'm trying to connect the dots now. So earlier this evening, we approved the, the new fees for recology. And, and, and I think somewhere under other fees or whatever. The category was, there was that three hundred and eighty thousand. That, that was added. So recology is paying the city and eventually all of us residents through the recology fees are paying. That back. Right, so, so this is, this is where this comes in. Got it. Why do we consider grants as expenditures?
We have to be, we have to be able to appropriate the money to spend it. So even though we're getting the revenue, we still have to. You know, the council has to give us direction or approve the appropriation, additional appropriation.
But you actually kind of cost neutral, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I didn't see it as a revenue.
That's correct.
Offset, right? And I think it goes hand in hand, at least those two items there. Okay, that answers that one. And then when you go to my favorite slide eight. I have more than one favorite slide. Tonight, that's my, no, no, that one. Yeah, so, so last year, when we, the blue line is what we approved last year, right? The so up until now, we're following the green line, right, which is actually more positive than the blue line was a year ago. But, but then in twenty-six, twenty-seven and thereafter, they kind of are in the same. On the same trend line again. Is this because of the additional? Expenditures we're approving tonight, if approved? Including full-time positions and so on?
Uh, the answer is no, because those positions accept the accounting and accounting assistant and tech. Only costing, overall cost about three thousand a year, the second year. And the reason for that, we, you see why the, the. The better projected as today, the green line and what we, what we projected last year. To meet in the latter years because of the cost we build in, in the future years. Including the two FTE of, two additional police officers in the second and the fourth year. And the increase in cost of CAL FIRE contract. We add in additional one million dollars each year. Because of the increase in CAL FIRE contract, you know, and as well as. Other expenditures that we build in there to, you know, we think that we. As of today, that we think should be more accurate than that was last year.
Okay, let me ask differently. I understand what you're saying. The, if, if those additional positions. Would not show up in a budget, then, then our green line would remain more positive compared to the blue line. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it's a fair statement. If at this time next year, when we adopt in the next cycle. And we think that we don't need, the chief come to me and said, we don't need additional officers. Then that, that reserve level probably remove higher and as well the. Our five chief said he doesn't need any additional staffing, then yes, then definitely the line will be much better.
Okay, then, then I'm kind of looking at him back there. So, so those two additional, I think, two positions, right, over the next two years. For the police department, how? How close will, will that get to you to where you'd like to be, chief? You know, you, you have your dream and your number in mind and. If you were to get those two positions. Is that it or are you coming back next year again? No, this, this is the kidding part. I, this is actually a serious question, yeah.
I wouldn't be a good chief if I said that it would be enough. We could always use more. We are embarking on a staffing study through post. To really take a deep dive and take a look at that. Right now that it's kind of like an a la carte menu. I think. Two is better than none, but we also have internet crimes and, and other specialties that we need to start considering. As those crimes are starting to climb up, internet child. Crimes as well, so. I'm not prepared to give you an exact answer right now, but I'm happy with two.
Okay, and that's, I don't, don't go away half one. Do, do you remember how many positions we added over the past two, three years? Plus these two, if those were to get approved tonight?
Think we were at thirty-nine. We're at forty-two. So that'd be about five.
Okay, that's not a bad number.
And that's swarm. We also have added non-swarm.
Yeah, you agree that's not a bad number?
It's not a bad number, when they're all at work. Higher, they're injured. And we're down twelve positions. That's when we're really hurting right now.
Still doing here, you should make sure they work because. No, no, okay, thank you. That, that's helped, but the, so that would make you feel more confident if you were to, or even more confident. Yes, to have those two positions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And the last one is kind of follow-up than what my colleague Libers asked as well. So, so we, we do list an expenditure for the P bid, right, and into this topic, I gets my blood boiling. But we don't offset anything yet. You know, if we give them money, we should take something. Because that was part of the deal, that, that's what I heard over and over back then, even though I didn't like the deal.
Currently right now, as I look at the community funding, staff recommendation, we did, as Chris mentioned, that we did propose a reduction in funding for the twinkle lights. And fifty percent from hundred percent previously and. And fifty percent from hundred percent previously, and uh we hope, as Chris mentioned, in our years, that when people have sufficient funding. Then um they would be able to step in and uh fund over that uh hundred percent of that portion. So in theory, yes, uh, we would have addition, we we won't have uh uh we won't impact the city fund. Because uh if the council decide to continue funding, continue funding at two hundred thousand dollars annual level. Then however, that uh amount that uh in the past have been C S I or council approved for uh twinkle light. And then would be useful for all the uh nonprofit organization, organization or events.
Okay, I I thought the deal always was that we would only fund those lights. Up to fifty percent if the downtime association also pays the other fifty percent. But did that deal change?
Yeah, previous years, they were approved for a hundred percent, and that was during COVID when they they had no money coming in because their events were all canceled. So they asked for a hundred percent the previous year and received it. This year, we're pushing it down to fifty percent, but some years ago, it was only fifty percent.
Okay, that's what I had in mind, yeah. So so COVID is over, right? And they had a successfully event. There's no excuse. Why they wouldn't pay, but but then we're still. Paying for twinkle lights, even though the P bit then also is in place. That really rubs me the wrong way, right?
The P bit's not implemented and has not collected money yet, so it's going to be difficult for them to give money to the twinkle lights when they haven't collected it yet.
No, but but we're talking about the budget in the future, right? Why why couldn't we reduce it in the budget now?
I mean, we we did, but the timing of the people that actually having money isn't isn't the first half of this fiscal year, and it's limited. The they have to collect, so it's that's why it's recommended.
And I think that's the beginning of twenty twenty four to start collections, and it takes a little while to accumulate funds.
Okay, I'll come back on that one. Mark my word. Guys, the uh the last question is uh related to uh handing over certain authorities. I don't have a problem with them uh per se. But would it be okay for for you to come back whenever, especially whenever you exercise certain. Items of interest to kind of come back and and inform us as a and the community.
Front of vehicles or the E V chargers?
Oh.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yeah.
It's delegated, yeah. Whenever you make a major change, that it doesn't just quietly happen.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Um, we could certainly report out on the E V chargers when we change the front, when we change the structure for that. And the vehicles. So attachment number, I think it's three to the to the materials, is a schedule from the budget. And so what that schedule shows is a list of all the different vehicles. And so what this um recommended action is, is for us to be able to go out and buy the vehicles and equipment consistent with that listing. Now, if for some reason. We have a vehicle outside of of that, that the dollar amount would require council authority. We would then come to you and request that additional vehicle, but as long as we stay in the realm of what's in that schedule, you know. Brand might change, that sort of thing. Um, that wouldn't come to you because you'd have that information in the document. But if there are any significant changes, we could certainly bring those to your attention.
Okay, I know, I I apologize, ma'am. I know I'm out of time, but. If you don't mind, when when, especially when you when you make a large purchase, just to, I I'm not going to remember for two years, uh. Which vehicles were on this list tonight, just to give us a heads high repurchase, big A B C, and this is how they look like. Kind of something. Would that be fair enough to ask?
I mean, I i- if it's the will of the council, we could include it in the in the financial report.
Yes, if this is the real council, we could definitely incorporate in our quality finance report, as we're going to do with the your uh purchasing up to six thousand and the donation.
It's okay. Thank thank you. No further question.
Thank you. Any other questions about the council? If none, we'll open the public comment. Any questions about the public? Any cards?
Yes, we have Nick Geish here.
Come on up, Nick. You've been off. There you go. There you go. Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff and Community. I'm speaking to you tonight as CEO and President of Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. First and foremost, on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to extend our appreciation for your review and consideration of our feedback requests. Well, as the council is well aware, the Friday Night Music Series is a legacy event for Morgan Hill, it's been over nineteen years now. But as with all of our community partner organizations, the past three years have certainly been an economic challenge. To maintain the level and the breadth of our services and Friday Night Music Series is certainly no exception. Host increases specific in specific areas such as security, regulatory and insurance requirements, as well as ongoing budget demands of further added fiscal pressures and to maintain the event. The chamber is committed to continue the Friday Night Music uh series legacy. That's why I'm here tonight. I would also like to reaffirm to the council that along with our continued pledge to provide a wonderful series of music fun and community interconnectedness. This year, we are once again excited to highlight a full series, ten weeks of cultural performances. Listening each group's performers between her opening and headline their acts to increase their visibility and highlight the diversity of our wonderful community. And we thank you for your time to speak tonight and your consideration of our feedback request. Thank you, Nick. Anyone else?
We have Brian Sullivan.
The microphone's off. There you go. No. Hear me now?
Ah, there we go.
There we go. Yep.
I wasn't going to speak on on this item, but uh councilmember Spring brought up the issue of asking the chief about. Would he be happy? What number would he be happy with police? And he was reticent because it's a budget type thing and very difficult to get the money to pay for police. The average that the federal government and the F D I says that. City should have is about one point two officers per thousand. Think of that. In less than four years, we're going to have over fifty thousand people in this city. At that number, we need sixty police officers and we're going to have forty four. As another example, somebody that has a lot more police officers in New York City, I just happened to look up, they have thirty five thousand plus police officers. Population of eight point four million. That's a lot of police officers, about three X number. So chief didn't want to bring it up, but. We could use another six or seven police officers, get even close to that number. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comment?
We have Matthew Stein.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, Matthew Stein, President of Freedom Fest. Um, I just want to thank you guys for your support. And the community for their support of July Fourth Celebration. Um, I just want to con- um. Convey and remind the two main tenants of Freedom Fest that has been uh readopted by our organization again this year. Um, the first being that we um are inclusive of every aspect of our community. Um, and one of the things we added in twenty twenty was not just age, race, um ethnic background, um but also health limitations. So starting in twenty twenty, we obviously live streamed our events. We continued that in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. We continue to do that for those who um due to health concerns could not attend in person, they should all be able to enjoy um the celebration of our country. The second tenant is that this event needs to be free of charge for all of our um uh community members. We don't believe that your economic stash should limit your ability to celebrate um the celebration of our country. So just want to do that reminder to to you that we obviously get all of our funding specifically through um individual donors, um our community. Um, and then obviously through the city as well. And so we just want to thank you for your support and appreciate your consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments?
I have um two on Zoom. We have Adelia Gomez.
Are you there, Adelia?
Adelia, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
There you go, yes. Just go ahead.
Hi, good evening, um, members of the city council and mayor. I am Adelia Gomez and I work with the community group Nueva Esperanza. And I want to let letting the council know we have had great success when our Dia de los Muertos altar and holiday postada. Events over the last few years and highlighting Latino based cultural event to to bring our many. Community members together in young um young people, students for our community, the one helping us when this e- events. And um we have had some management changes and will bring a request to. To that for the next month for your consideration. As well, so yeah, it's why I want to letting you know, and we have a very. Great events for that community and the young people. So hopefully you get your thinking this for your in your consideration. And that will be great for us. Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have Tracy Wingrove.
Hello. My name is Tracy Wingrove, and I am the Chief Development Officer at Healthier Kids Foundation. We uh provide vision dental uh hearing and wellness screening for students in Morgan Hill. And uh just wanted to um. Thank you for the opportunity to apply for a community grant and encourage the council to approve the grants. Uh, they really make a difference in the work that we're able to do in your community. Uh, we not only screen kids, but we also um follow up with families whose kids uh screen out of range with issues. And help them overcome barriers to get the healthcare that their children need. We're really proud to serve the families at Morgan Hill and look forward to doing so again next year. Thank you. I I urge you to approve the community fund grants. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No more speakers.
Yeah, if there are no other, we'll close the public comment. Uh, if there are no other comments now, comments by the council, councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to return to the vehicle replacement and just say that I. I would, you know, I actually would support not. I like having it come to council because I like seeing it. I'm happy to, if we can get. Um, I would like to see us get that information on what's being purchased before, not after, so that. We're not getting a report out on what's been done, but that there's a report, this is what's coming. And the ability to take that feedback, if there's any feedback from any of of the public or what have you. So I'd like to see that happen with that.
This is discussion time, so I have a question for you regarding that. I won't, I'm not cutting you off, I'm just asking. And are you saying that if we approve through appropriations? Vehicles to be purchased. Giving the city manager authority to do so. You're saying you would like to have that come back. Uh, for approval or for?
What I'm saying is we have monthly, we have monthly updates every day, every month. So maybe the month before, in part of that monthly update, we will be acquiring, you know, five vehicles or what have you, so that if there's an opportunity for that to be discussed here.
Okay. It certainly is an update, basically.
Right. I mean, otherwise, I guess from the public comment, there's really no, you know, it's already done, it's over. And it's just an information. So I took it as they would like to learn a little bit about or. Advance, maybe they want it to be diesel, maybe they want whatever the advancements are, they'd like to share some of that.
But I do think, though, if we, again, part of what we're doing here is approving. The permission of our city manager to go forward and do that based on the city manager and her team, looking at all of those options and really. Bring their best to purchase the most economic, most economical vehicles, vehicles, that sort of thing. I I what I don't want to do is. Give the right to go forward based on appropriations to spend and then have to come back and then we talk about it again.
Right.
If that's the case, then we don't give her, we don't give her the permission to go purchase products.
And I guess I'm trying to find a loop or some way for that input to be taken, and I'm open to whatever suggestions there are for that.
Monica started the um explanation that, you know, we, and Kim, I don't know if you're able to um put up on the um. Screen attachment number three, um that would help um on this item. And not from the presentation, but just the separate exhibit. So during the budget process, um. As part of the document, we list out, and you'll see in a moment, the vehicle number, the department, the vehicle vehicle description and the amount. Um, and so that page has everything that we're going to buy. And so in the budget process, um, we can make sure that we specifically bring forward and highlight. This particular schedule. Um, this is an item that we're bringing forward to um in the spirit of trying to make the meetings as efficient as possible. Um, so that, you know, each time, you know, we don't bring the vehicle forward and the staff report that goes with it. Um, and so that's why we're requesting this item. So here's here's the um. Page from the budget document. So this is just part of our our book, our budget book. Um, and as you can see, um, for each given year, fiscal year twenty two and twenty three, twenty three and twenty four, you can see. The total vehicle replacement um schedule.
You may put something outside that, of course, you would you would.
Yeah.
Come to us for.
Right. And and you know, I think you were um alluding to not just the vehicle and the amount, but you know, the sort of the discussion about, you know, diesel versus electric. Right.
Those sort of discussions can take place during the goal setting. And then also during the budget process, whether it be through community meetings or whether it be through our budget workshop. Um, if council wants to provide us with direction. Chris, do you have anything else to add?
I would just add that any vehicle that can be electric going forward, based on our climate action plan, will be electric if there's. A possibility for it to be electric. Um, but many vehicles, at this point, we can't get an electric.
And to add, in addition, you know, there's always a desire to buy locally whenever we can, and they meet the specs, we try to buy locally.
And that was the second example I was going to give. That was another one that, you know, somebody had asked, Al, why aren't you buying locally?
That we would love to, love to, when we can.
Okay, so those those are great. Thank you. I think that would work. We could highlight this so people aren't having to dig around for it. That would be perfect. I'm happy with that. Um, I also wanted to talk about the community uh funding and. Just in looking at this, you know, one of these, and and I've talked about this before, but. I bring it up again because when we're looking at this, we've got two hundred thousand. And we've got twenty thou-, I mean, we've got some significant events on here, not very many, but some. But I'll talk about the historical society, which I've talked about before. And I looked at the application, and it's really about maintenance. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to decide. And figure out, maybe going forward, we need to have some kind of a fund that is for maintenance, capital improvements. Because when you look at the policy, it really talks about. B, the program, event or activity provides a direct benefit to the Morning Hill community. And. Almost all of these are activities, programming, events that, you know. Residents, families, most of them are all involved children, are able to go and participate in. And I know that the historical um society does do some of those events, but this isn't going to that. It's really going to maintenance of. The building. And I would like, if we're going to do maintenance of a building, then we should probably have some type of a capital improvement or maintenance fund. That that comes from. But, you know, looking at this twenty percent, I mean, ten percent of our whole budget, two hundred thousand. Is going to maintenance. And I think that's something that's concerning for me. I don't, I don't necessarily support that. I also don't want to leave them just kind of. You know, hanging because they do have some great work, but I would like if there's a request for twenty thousand dollars, I like to see that. Go to a particular program, a particular event, you know, who is being serviced with that program. And um that, I think, you know, everybody could get behind. So those are some of the comments that I think are really important that we're looking for. I mean. We have to, we have to make some tough decisions here. Um, and I think, you know, that that would be helpful to do. So. This year, I could go ahead and see, you know, supporting that, but moving forward, I would definitely like for us to come back and talk about how these monies are are being used.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or added to the discussion here? So none, we can, so you know, oh, I'm sorry, we need to go. This came back, so we're good. We did, we now take him up. We can actually uh receive a motion for all, really all five. Item number one is to. Please. You can, you can do recommendation for all six. There you go. Mix and match, whatever your pleasure. A second one. So we've got a motion by councilmember Borjoli, uh, uh, seconded by councilmember Spring. Can could you uh then, so we have this. Can, could you uh, then, so we have this now, could you read the ordinance or read the motion as how it would read in the record? This would be staff recommendation. I want to make sure we're clear on that, right?
Yes, so it'd be um, to approve staff recommendation.
Very good. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? None? That passes five zero. Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation. You know, on to item twelve, provide direction to staff on proposed future council initiated agenda items. These are a couple of things that we have talked about. In fact, uh, members, uh, council members have submitted for discussion here tonight and what we're going to do, and we're going to have uh, Christina provide an overview on all uh, four of these. Again, what we're going to do when she's done is we're, what we're going to do is then decide, do we want uh, staff to bring back a more detailed uh, um, agenda, uh, upward on agenda for a future discussion. So this won't be yes or no, we're approving the item. It's about bringing it forward for greater discussion in the future. So Christina, turn that over to you.
Right. Okay, so this report is basically the first report coming back um, under the new policy, amended policy ninety-seven oh one. And so that policy allows members of the council to request items to be added to an upcoming council agenda by requesting those items during the future council initiated agenda items section. And then a council report will then be placed on an upcoming agenda for council discussion and consideration. And part of that is if a council member brings forward an item, they then share with me the email or otherwise, you know, what a bit of background so that we know what's being asked for. And so the staff report summarizes the four different items. And so I'll just briefly mention each one um, as attachments to the staff report. Um, we have policy ninety-seven oh one, as well as the requests from the council members that requested these items. So the first one is managing and counting abstain votes by council members. And so um, this item was brought forward um, after we've seen some abstained votes and just questions about um, wh- when can votes be, when can um, a council member abstain? And so our city attorney provided some information about what the law says and about what the rules require. And so basically, we recommend, in this case, that council direct staff to come back with further recommendations, um, if they're interested in this, to adopt alternative rules of parliamentary procedures and um, potentially look at amending the council policy governing the conduct of meetings. So if there's interest in pursuing this further, we would bring it back for a full-fledged staff report with more information. So you'd basically be directing us to do more work. The next item um, relates to rooster noises. And so um, these are complaints. And so right now complaints for rooster noises would fall under our municipal code, under animals, animal restrictions and public nuisances, not specific to roosters. And so I'm looking for direction on whether council would like us to consider amending the municipal code to provide additional provisions to address rooster noise disturbances. The third item uh, relates to charging credit card fees on all city services. We previously came to the council and uh, request an increase um, so that we could pass along a two point seven five percent fee, so that we would recover the fees um, that are being charged both on development services and transient occupancy taxes. And so council approved that. Um, now with that, there was interest in um, looking at, you know, are there other services where we're not charging the fee into the areas are recreation as well as utility payments. And so there's a brief explanation in this staff report to talk about why we haven't historically passed these fees along. Um, everything from on the utility side is wanting to encourage people to enroll in auto pay, get electronic statements, and then in recreation, really encouraging people to come and and to go online and pay through credit card and the additional um, staff time that we would have if people wanted to pay cash to avoid the credit card fees. And we think that it might actually reduce um, mem, yeah, reduce um, signups for different classes. And so um, that's our thought, that's our recommendation. However, if council does want to get more information on this, see what other cities are doing, that sort of thing, then we would come back and agendize that. And the last item is um, related to smoking in multi-unit properties. And now we do have an ordinance that regulates smoking in public places, but it doesn't regulate smoking in multifamily residences. On most, if not all, of our city, of um, rental projects in our city are smoke-free. Um, and that's um, you know, in the units and on the grounds, except for a designated smoking area, and that's done primarily, of course, for health reasons, but also insurance rates skyrocket when smoking is allowed. And so um, we're seeking direction on whether the council would like us to bring back what it would look like to have an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in multi-unit properties. And that concludes my report, and we're just looking for direction on each of the four items.
Very good. Any questions? Council member, uh, we'll go, Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to just get a little bit more clarification on number one, uh, which is it says managing and counting abstentions, but I also heard you talk about or mention um, determining how uh, how government policy on how people should vote. And I think that council members should have the right to their own vote. I, I have abstained once. I think that's it, maybe twice. I, I know other people do abstain. I try not to do it. Um, because they think we're here to make the hard decisions, but I also respect if, if somebody wants to abstain. And so my question is, is this truly just figuring out how we're counting it, or is this also trying to say you will vote on a certain way, you know, you will have to vote regardless. And I feel like there's, there's some guardrails that what's, what's.
So California law says the council members have a duty to vote either affirmatively or negatively. Um, that said, the, the issue um, and the reason this came up is that we have a set of procedures that are silent on if, when a council member does abstain, um, how that abstain, and and there are even in a copper law, there are circumstances in which an abstention is appropriate. And there, our policy is silent as to how those are treated, which has potential legal consequences, particularly if it's an ordinance that requires three affirmative votes and we have a statutory obligation to take action. But we can't. Um, so how do we deal with that abstention? Um, and so right now our, our rules are silent and um, it's something that I think if we're going to continue to have abstentions, we need to remedy. Um, so, so that's why, that's why um, that's how the issue came up. And I think it was in that context that council member Spring asked to have this brought back for council consideration.
So would this be a training? Is this something that wouldn't have to happen? Um, yeah.
Well, there even, so, so even if um, there will always be um, the need to abstain and the rules are always going to be silent. So we need to address that one way or the other. So it doesn't, so, so it doesn't have to be this, it, I think if, if you give staff direction to proceed with this, we're going to come back with recommendations for um, that are a little bit broader because right now we use um, a s- uh, let's say the procedures, it's about a hundred and fifty page book, um, that I will be honest with you, I have not memorized. Um, um, and uh, and and if we switch to Robert's Rules of Orders, that it condensed brief version is two hundred and eight pages, which I will not memorize. So so our recommendation will likely be to go to a set, a similar set of policies that is written specifically for smaller bodies like city councils instead of state legislatures and academic senates and those types of, but um, but you know, we want council by and in direction to do that.
It's still, it's still uh, council member Martinez Beltran, your time, is it, are your questions done?
Yeah, I, I think you've answered most of them. So you would be coming back with one, how to count abstentions, but two, there would be some policy of when you have to abstain or when you don't have to abstain. Um, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, and the, and the, and this, it's still council's policy to adopt or not. If these would just be recommendations.
Okay.
The council member Borjoli.
So, um, I, I kind of agree with council member Martinez Beltran in that it's, it's all right to abstain. Uh, but the council has the authority to make a policy uh, and put a policy in place that when a vote is to to one and the ordinance can't pass because of the one ab- abstention, uh, but you can make a policy that says go back to the abstentioner and ask and or request that they make a yay or a no instead of an abstention. That may be a very simple way on how to get around. The purported, I don't consider it a problem, but the purported problem. So we could solve this uh, very easily.
And, and, and that's, we're, right now, tonight, it's just asking for direction as to whether or not council wants to try to solve the problem.
Based on a report from staff?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Council member Spring?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a couple of comments. That's exactly behind it. Right? I'm not looking for something complicated. I was surprised that we don't have any, any rules or policies written down. What do we do in these kinds of situations, right? And we had a couple uh, uh, situations where uh, uh, one of us abstained, but then it was, became very unclear. How is that being recorded and counted, right? And what does it mean? And then I asked, well, where is that written down? And then I found out, well, nowhere. So it's a, the whole purpose is, is to kind of have that in writing, simple, as simple as we can uh, that one. Uh, I'll go over the other ones too, since I proposed them. Uh, the rooster one is really something that was brought up by residents, the rooster noise. Uh, I don't, I'm an animal lover, I don't have a sleepless night over it, but I, I, but I, I, I think, um, and I don't have a neighbor with a rooster. Uh, um, but, but I, uh, I, I don't think our current ordinances are strong enough that help here, you know? Uh, maybe someone for, the chief goes out there, right? But I, I'm not sure the chief knows what to do with that rooster unless they have some fried chicken later on. Uh, so, sorry, sorry, dear rooster folks. Uh, no, I, I don't know what really happens, right? How you, how you solve that. And because our ordinance doesn't say anything about that, right? But it has been brought to my attention by several residents. Couple times I I went, went to city staff and say, hey, can we do something? Uh, the, the credit card fee that came up, I, I think there's about two hundred thousand dollars, right, that the city currently uh, does not collect. Um, I, I was, I'm, I, I was, I'm not happy with the staff report. I think the staff kind of cherry picked cities around us that might or might not charge those fees. But uh, um, I found as many cities around us that do charge, um, San Jose actually does charge them. Uh, utility fee two point four percent is on their website. So the staff is, report is not correct. Uh, Los Cados, Los Altos charged them not far from us, right? So this is a cherry picked report, right? Like you can find as many cities that do charge them, uh, the credit card fees, uh, or others called them, uh, convenience fees and so on, right? You don't have to pay in, in, in cash. You can pay with, with, with an online check, right? Or a debit card doesn't cost you anything. You still can pay online, right? Uh, staff doesn't mention that either, but that, that is uh, but whether it's your P two E bill, your, your water, uh, in San Jose, uh, uh, everything in DMV, Santa Clara County uh, fees, they all charge those fees. There's nothing unusual, but I think two hundred thousand dollars for something that has become a convenience for most of us, how we pay. Uh, it's a lot of money we don't collect as a city. And I think it is worth having a discussion. I'm not saying we decide tonight, but I think I'd like to have a discussion whether or not and how we do it. Uh, so that's where that came from.
I think uh, and I, I think at some point, Dot probably needs to respond to your, your comment. It might have been, it might have been a little unfounded. It's certainly your opinion, but Dot, if you wanted to respond to that.
No, I approve. I can send you a link from San Jose right now.
Yeah, um, we bring uh, Jack Lee for his director. I just want to make a, if I could, uh, I can, uh, my correction on the San Jose. I pay, I, I live in San Jose, I do auto pay with my credit card on T O T S, and they don't charge me uh, fee for paying credit card. And we need survey, San Jose was one of the cities we surveyed uh, that do not charge uh, credit card fees for.
Now, is that across the board they do not charge or for certain things they don't charge?
Uh, for credit card. Yeah, one, the two, two point four percent, you preference San Jose website. Yes, correct. They do charge credit card fees on certain payments, but not utilities.
Well, it's right above fertility billing. What that statement is.
Yeah.
I'll send you the link.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like us, right? The city, we charge two point seven percent now, but only to the home services and the T O T payments. Doesn't matter. Yeah.
Okay. Let's remember.
Is he done?
Yes.
Yeah, let me go through the list here. Um, thank you. Um, abstaining votes. I think it's worth a conversation. So what's my opinion would be to agendize.
Still any questions at this point? We are going to go to public hearing uh, next, so.
Okay. Well, then I do have one other question.
Here.
Okay. Um, how do you have baby chicks if you don't have a rooster?
That's, that's probably a conversation for a later time.
We should put chief on the spot.
Yeah, right. Yeah, someone's got to answer that and we don't know who. Uh, Councilor Borjoli.
Well, since uh, council member Spring brought up a couple of things, uh, you know, why he put certain things on here. Uh, number four is the one that um, I brought forth. And uh, I uh, I got a, a letter from a community member uh, who opened my eyes up to several things. Uh, I'm, I included in my uh, the draft of this uh, supplements, and I hope my, my fellow council members read those supplements. Uh, one was an ordinance uh, in Millbrae uh, that they have. But they're only one of over thirty cities in the Bay Area that has an ordinance for um, smoke-free um, in a multi-dwelling environment. And um,
Again, council member, what we're talking about tonight is not so much.
No, but, but I want to, I want to make it a point that uh, we, we need to seriously consider that, just like everybody else.
Yeah.
Um, and um, and, and I, again, I just hope you read my supplements, but I'll end with, you know, over fifty thousand people die a year from secondhand smoke. And uh, my, my mother-in-law died from secondhand smoke. She never smoked a day in her life. So this, this is something that I think be part of our founding document where the word quality of life is in that. So I'm, I'm just in favor of bringing it back like council member Le, Leber said, bringing it back.
Again, we're still on the question, we're still in question period right here though. Um, and so I'm going to go to council member, uh, if you're done, if you're done.
I am done.
Okay, thank you. Council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. So I wanted to ask a question on the rooster. Do we have to create an ordinance? I mean, this is Morgan Hill.
I mean, that, though, if, I mean, that simply will be based on what we're, again.
Legally need.
I, what I'm saying though is, well, tonight we're asking them, if, if we, if we decide to ask them to bring back a report, that we would then decide at whatever next meeting we discuss it, whether or not we want to have an ordinance. So we're not trying to decide tonight about an ordinance. We're just giving direction to bring back information to let us decide at a later time.
I mean, I, I, but the question is, do we need an ordinance to regulate rooster noise? I think the answer is yes, we don't have an ordinance right now that specifically regulates rooster noise.
Yeah. Oh, that answers your question? But we're going to answer that question in our discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, so we don't have an ordinance. We don't know if we, we must not legally have to have an ordinance.
We, no, you're not, we're not required to have any, I mean, certain ordinances we are required to adopt. Animal noise isn't one of them.
Okay, thank you. That was my, just to clarify, in our municipal code, we do have a reference to animals and public nuisances, and that's what we use right now. Okay.
Okay.
Very good. And if some, someone could send me that later, that would be, and in um, actually, I think, you know what? It's copied and pasted in the staff report. It's in section two. Okay.
Yeah, we're, I'm sorry, please. I thought you were done.
I'm on number three about the credit card fees. The currently, what we just talked about last, I think it was last meeting, is that we would move forward with, we would charge credit card fees for de- development. And there was something else that we would charge credit card fees on.
Transient occupant.
Occupancy taxes.
Okay, T O T. So we would charge um, fees on that, but we would not be charging residents to pay their utility bill. And the biggest difference is just the amount, right? Because development service fees are significant versus a class, you know?
So I'm happy with that. I wouldn't.
Yeah, questions, questions were not.
I'm done with my question.
Very good. Now going to go to public, we're an open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, I have several speakers. Um, Doug Mearhead?
Good evening, uh, council members, staff, guests. The recommend name is Doug Mirhead. I live in Morgan Hill. I'm mostly going to talk about the abstain vote. But I'll have to also give you my opinion on how you're dealing with smokers. So uh shortly after council member Spring. Um, asked for the abstain issue to come back to council, I sent you all an email. Um, I would really like you to, rather than dealing with this small issue. Think about if there's a better way to right-size your parliamentary procedures to match the kind of work you actually do. Uh, the city attorney gave you a brief highlight of Sturgis Roberts and Rosenberg. I happen to favor Rosenberg. City attorney will not be without a job. You are still subject as a general law city to the. Government code of the state of California. And people from outside will come and automatically assume that you used Roberts as Don Gage did when he came up from Gilroy to help us out with the. R D A distribution oversight board. But we would have something that would answer this particular question and probably will serve as well. The only agency I personally know that uses Roberts is the Water District and they haven't had any elementary problems. Uh, using that. So please consider bringing this back. But not to answer council member Spring's specific question, but actually to give yourself. A parliamentary procedures that we can all understand. It's only about seven pages long. Uh, I haven't commented about smoking in a long time because we haven't had you telling people you can't smoke on trails. Or telling apartment owners or dwellers that, you know, you can't do this or that. If you really feel the smoking is bad, please stop exempting all the single-family homes. And put it to a vote of the residents of the city. Do we want to have smoking in the city or not? Let's get done with these little itty-bitty lip picks that uh mostly affect people like me. That happen to live in apartments and walk on our trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else?
Judy Scoville.
Hello.
Hi Judy, thanks for hanging in there with us. This time you get three minutes.
Hi, I'm Judy Scoville. Um, I am actually a teacher in Morgan Hill and I'm surprised I'm still awake tonight. Um, so thank you for letting me talk today on behalf of um smoke-free environments and multi-dwelling units. I live in one. Um, I've been living here in Morgan Hill for years now, ten, seven? I was in Gilroy for a little while. And then um, so we bought a house, a condo. And we're very excited. That was like five years ago. And we moved in and um, he's a retired teacher and I'm still teaching. And we bought a place. So that's a big deal. And then um, it wasn't long after that. Um, I started getting smoke, cigarette smoke into my condo. Through the vents and the laundry room. And um, I thought, wow, this is not where I want to live anymore. Um, and I really was very upset because I've been an athlete most of my life. And I take really good care of myself. I eat right, I exercise, I do all that I'm supposed to do. But this I could not control. Um, and my husband has asthma and that's gotten worse. And I've never had any problems. I lived in um Santa Cruz County. I lived in Gilroy. I lived in the apartment buildings that have no smoking in Morgan Hill. I moved into my condo. Within one year, I'm on an inhaler. I actually am on an inhaler. I have to take it every day, twice a day. And I'm contributing that to the smoke that is coming from the unit up above us. It's coming through the vent and it's actually so bad in my laundry room that we have to keep the door closed. And the door to the bathroom closed. And sometimes I've actually resulted to. Um, taping like a filter up there. Like I took a like a sponge type thing and cover tried to cover the vent. Well, that didn't work. And I cut, I put um towels there so it doesn't come into the living space. And then our neighbors up above have complained that they're getting it into their actual kitchen and living area now. And it's because there are smokers who live up above and one unit over and the vents are all connected to each other. And within our unit, we have young children. And I'm thinking, looking at this little boy who's two. He's growing up breathing in that smoke every single day. Whether you can smell it or not, it's in there. Because I am now proof that there are health risks to it. So I am asking you to consider really putting an ordinance or or consider whatever you're going to do. Um, to take this into consideration.
Very good. Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
You need a note for being tardy tomorrow, you let us know. Thank you for your comments on that. Any other, any other comments?
Um, Brian Lack.
The retired guy.
So happy he's retired.
My wife took half my speech away. So it won't take long. As a retired elementary teacher, it's hard for me to say hello in less than three minutes, but I'll do my best. Uh, I'm not going to lecture you about the dangers of secondhand smoke. We all know that they cause death and serious illnesses. Mr. Borjoli referred to. Interesting statistic, though. We're all interested in gun violence in our country and it makes the headlines every day. Last year, forty-eight thousand people were killed due to gun violence. About the same number died of non-smoking adults died from the effects of uh secondhand smoke. When I first emailed all of you on the thirty-first of March. Uh, I included my thoughts and uh your city manager responded very appropriately and politely to me. There were a couple of things in that uh response that I I kind of wanted to give my perspective on, if it's okay. And there it is. Elementary teachers, don't do this. Uh, it's most, if not all, city rental projects are smoke-free in the units and on the grounds. Absolutely true. Except for designated smoking areas. It's for health reasons, but more importantly, because insurance rates are generally higher. Uh, where smoking is permitted. Now, Morgan Hill has a lot of government subsidized apartments. In nineteen, in, sorry, in two thousand eighteen. I'd mandated that all government subsidized apartments are smoke-free. For the health of almost two million people nationwide and the seven hundred thousand children that live in those units. So that's why a lot of Morgan Hill units are smoke-free. The ones that are privately owned. It's also true we're smoke-free. Insurance purposes is a real factor. They're high because statistically. Fires are much more prevalent in buildings where there are smokers than when there are not smokers. So that's why the insurance companies raise the rates. Uh, another comment, uh, HOAs may have policies that include certain smoking restrictions. Now, we're in an HOA. And it's true, there are two paths that HOAs can take to restrict the smoking. However, there are a lot of constraints and expenses involved. Some HOAs may want to not go down those paths. And even if they do. Your ordinance would have much more impact. On condominiums than an HOA rule would. Now, as a educator.
Your time is up. Is up. As an educator.
In more ways than one.
I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And uh, Jody Johnson.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. Um, I am also here on the smoking ordinance that I'd like to have. Um, go into effect, also part of the same um location as they are. And we're on the board and we're trying to fight for people that are living in their units. It's hot. Our units don't have air conditioning units if we, unless we get them ourselves. And we're sleeping with the windows open in the summertime. And we've got people that are smoking out on their balconies or smoking in their units. We're getting the smoke within our own units. I personally have people, they're smoking outside. It's coming up into my windows as I'm trying to sleep. It's just something that it would be nice, being a board member, to be able to have an ordinance that we could go back to. In order to just set up so that no smoking in the units, no smoking directly next to the buildings. Anyways, that's just my side of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Any other comments?
And we have no further speakers.
In the case, we will close uh public comments. Uh, if there are no other comments by the council. We let's go through these items one at a time and then determine again. What we're determining here is whether or not the count, we're going to have staff bring back. Uh, a more expensive report for us to consider.
I I have a comment.
Please go right ahead.
It is, so I'm actually happy. I think the process is working, right? So we're we're not just in hiding, uh, just getting rid of certain topics, right? Uh, so we had three people staying until ten o'clock, uh, voicing their opinions and other listening in. So whether or not we move forward with items, but I think the process that we agreed to a few weeks ago is working. And so I like it and thanks to the city for helping with that process.
Yep, good point. Thank you. In the case, let's go with number one here. Managing and counting abstain votes by the city council members. Uh, do we want the uh staff to bring back a more detailed report for us to consider? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, pass. Did you went aye?
I I didn't say aye, but I don't know.
Are you abstaining?
No. I wholly uh support bringing it back for discussion.
Yes, and that's what we're looking for. So that would be an aye vote.
Would be an aye.
Yes, exactly right. So that passes. So we'll be looking for a report to come back. You two considering noise ordinance to address roosters, uh, rooster noises in urban neighborhoods. Uh, do we want to have that come back? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the pass is three to two. Uh, changing credit card fees.
You heard who? Okay.
I'm sorry, did you get it? Very good. Thank you. Uh, charging credit card fees on all city services again. Do we want the staff to bring back a report for consideration?
I have a question. This would change all. So we're going to change from what we're doing now. Development funds and I forget the other, I keep forgetting the other one. So we would change from that to charging everybody?
It's only to have a discussion about whether you want to do that.
To do exactly what you explained. That would be, it would be.
That would be one of these discussions.
We would change something. Okay. Yeah, I'm clear. Thank you.
So all in favor with doing that? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The one that passes. Uh, considering an, did you catch, capture the ayes and okay. Yes, correct. Uh, number four, considering an ordinance prohibiting smoking in multi-unit properties. If we want to bring that back, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That passes five zero.
Okay, so if I could just wrap up um this item. So basically, we have four items that are going to come back to you for further consideration. And so what we're going to do is figure out with our other council agenda items, will we can program that into items that'll come back to you?
Yep, yep, that makes sense. Very good. Thank you. Uh, so next item, future council initiated agenda items. Do um any of my colleagues have? Yes, council member.
I would like to have um it come back as an ordinance that we will, we have a hard stop on. Information, people writing in and stuff uh for like Tuesday at five o'clock. We don't accept anything more other than from staff because I find it very frustrating. I'm walking out the door at five o'clock today. I'm getting two more. Uh, not fair to us. It needs to read all that. And I think we need to make a policy about this. So I would like to have this back. Is there a policy? I mean. Oh, we need to enforce it then. Right, it's just, it's not Tuesday. And so I I can pull up what the language is.
Yeah, whatever it is, I mean.
By noon, is that?
Yeah.
That we talked about it the worst.
Okay.
But then, since this is future council agenda items, we can, we can report back on what our policy is.
Okay, well, I would like to see that enforced, please.
So I think what we're asking for then is a discussion to either to know what the current policy is and then consider.
Yes, and and the policy was adopted um with the last council, so we can, we can potentially update you offline. And then we can um bring it back.
Okay.
I want to make sure, though, are you are you asking for a future agenda item to reconsider?
And if I just super quickly, what what the policy is, is just no later than three P M on Tuesday. But if they are submitted, then we will do our best to get them out. That we can document that and bring it back for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so currently it's three P M on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Got it. Very good.
The public needs to know and we need to enforce it then. Or we need to change it.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Councilmember.
I want to clarify, so the one we were talking about these four agenda items and you said that we would bring them back and weave them into something. I I want to, what? Oh, yes. So um, what I'm saying is we have four items that are going to require some level of work, right? And so what you've done is you've directed us to work on these items, you know, and so they're going to, some of them are going to take a significant amount of time to compile the information. And then to figure out when we're going to bring them back to the council for consideration. So I'll update the council with when these are going to come back. Along with the other ones that are on our list, our follow-up list from before.
And I thought you were saying that you would incorporate them with other items and I.
Well, no, no, no. We were distinct items. Yeah, very good.
Very good.
I do have two future agenda items, please. One, I would like for us to talk about festivals, safety. I'm seeing in this new time that we're in. So I'd like to see that come back. And then number two, I would like to talk about um. Funding, again, of capital improvements, maintenance, things like that, where we're using community promotion funds. So those two item, please.
Very good. Thank you.
And I'll just remind the council, did you have?
Member Spring has.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
Just going to remind the council with your future agenda items, just to follow up with an email to me with a little bit more detail.
Yes, I did so already.
Yes, very timely. Thank you.
Yeah, the first one is I I learned today, I've never seen our fee. You know, when when someone rents a room at the C C C or so, there's fee structures. And then it has for non-resident residents and nonprofits. Uh, and for reasons unknown to me. During the non-peak hours, the fees are all the same. But there are distinctions for the for the other categories. And and I think there also should be a lower fee for nonprofits during non-peak hours. And I I'd like to have a discussion on that. Uh, that should be an easy one. Uh, and and the other one is, uh, consider it almost like a new. Uh, legislation period in place. I'll bring it back. I'd like like us to have a discussion about whether or not we should. Uh, have an ordinance in place for term limits for us council members and commissioners. And 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 with the new process that will then enable people from the public also to share an opinion. Not like the last time where we just killed it before it even came to discussion.
Very good. If there are no other comments, questions or anything of the like, meeting is adjourned. All right, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.